President.
Councilmember Green.
Present.
Councilmember Velchine.
Present.
Vice Mayor McCurvy.
Here.
Mayor Meister.
Present. Oral communication, this is opportunity to address the city council on any matter scheduled for closed session unless additional time is authorized by the council. All commentary shall be limited to three minutes. I'm not seeing anyone. Move on to closed session, city manager.
Thank you mayor, members of the council, we have seven closed session items. First one, government code section five four nine five six point eight, conference with real property negotiators, property. A portion of APN three zero two dash one four zero dash zero one one. Agency negotiator Richard Tree, negotiating parties city of Porterville and the United States. Bureau of Reclamation under negotiation terms and price. Item number two, government code section five four nine five six point nine five. Liability liability claim claimant Sebastian Martinez. Agency claimed against city of Porterville. Item number three, government code section five four nine five six point nine five. Liability claim claimant Jennifer Milliken. Agency claimed against city of Porterville. Item number four, government code section five four nine five six point nine five. Liability claim claimant State Farm Insurance as subjugate of Alva Fernandez. Agency claimed against city of Porterville. Item number five, government code section five four nine five six point nine D one. Conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation city of Huntington Beach. At all versus Newsom at all. Number twenty three dash three six nine four. Ninth Circuit District of Columbia number eight. Dash twenty three dash C V dash zero zero four dash twenty one dash F W S dash A D S. Item six, government code section five four nine five seven, public employee appointment, employment. Title city manager. Finally, item number seven, government code section five four nine five seven point six. Conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator mayor Greg Meister, employee city manager.
Okay, at this time we'll go into closed session and reconvene at six thirty.
We'll reconvene, open session, and report on any reportable action taken in closed session. City Manager.
I've got it Mayor, thank you. So on item two, the liability claim, claimant Sebastian Martinez, on a motion by Councilmember Rivas, seconded by Mayor Meister, and a five-zero vote, that claim was denied. On item number three, liability claim, claimant Jennifer Milliken, on a motion by Councilmember Beltran, seconded by Vice Mayor McCurvy, and a five-zero vote, that claim was denied. And on item number four, liability claim, claimant State Farm Insurance, a subrogee of Elvia Fernandez, on a motion by Councilmember Rivas, seconded by Vice Mayor McCurvy, that claim was also denied, on a four-one vote, with Councilmember Beltran dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. I'd ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing for an invocation. But before we have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Green, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the greatest voice of my generation, Charlie Kirk.[1234.11][1234.11](Laughter). A...you know, he preached...and he preached the light of Jesus Christ, the glory of Jesus Christ. And that is the stream of liberty. And it was one of his greatest attributes of Charlie Kirk. But he also was unafraid to call out the demonic forces in our country. Forces that support the murder of unborn children, the indoctrination and medical castration of children, pushing men into women's safe spaces, open borders, allowing fentanyl into our country, killing our youth, soft-on-crime measures that allow monsters on our streets. And this demonic force, if you dare to speak up to it, demands silence and censorship, and will murder you if need. I ask for a moment of silence for the heartbreaking, senseless murder of Charlie Kirk. Our prayers go out to Charlie Kirk's family, Erica Kirk, and their two beautiful children. And I just ask for a moment of silence.
Councilman Green.
Whatever one please salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to give prayers, sir? You're giving me the "I."
Thank you for this opportunity. Let us bow. Father in heaven, dear Father, we thank you so much for the goodness that you give. Father, we thank you for the beautiful day that you bless us with, the beautiful sunrise. And although it's hot, Father, we praise your name, and we thank you for each and every day as it comes. Father, we thank you for the cooling temperatures that are on their way. Father, above all, we thank you for your love, and we thank you for your son, Jesus. And Father, we ask that you will watch over us as a community, as a county, as a people here in this part of California. Father, we ask that you will just watch over our hearts, our attitudes and our thoughts, and bring us peace, Father. There are so many angry people, and help us to be a calming force, instead of adding to the hatred or adding to the anger. Father, we pray that people will love one another and get along, and just be at peace with each other. We pray, Father, that the violence will cease. There's so much of it in our great country. And Father, we love our country, we love our state, we love our town. Help us to be good to one another, and forgive us when we go astray. Father, help us to protect our children. Help us to watch over them, help us to protect their innocence and their youth, and let them be the children that they need to be, to grow up as a healthy adult. Father, we pray for the safety of our families as different forces come into our community and just seek to bring down everything that is light and good and true. So Father, we lift our prayers and our hearts up to you. And we pray for each other as citizens, no matter who we are, no matter where we're from. Father, help us to treat each other with love and respect and honor. And so, Father, we give our prayer to you, and we thank you for loving us. And above all, we thank you for Jesus in our hearts. Help us to live worthy of being called yours. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Is there anyone else? I'm not seeing anyone. Please be seated. Okay, before we go on to oral communication, we have an amendment to the agenda tonight. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council staff is requesting that the council consider adding an urgency item to tonight's agenda. Today, the city has received a request from the United States Army to utilize the city's sports park beginning tomorrow. The Army, and Fernando, if you can give it to the council, the Army has provided an agreement that would authorize use of the sports park for a five-year term, beginning September 17th, tomorrow, through the end of September 2030. Because this item was received after the posting of the agenda, and the Army is requesting to begin use of the facility tomorrow, there is a need for the council to take action tonight. Under the Brown Act, Government Code 549, 54.2b2, the council may add this item to the agenda upon a two-thirds vote of the members present. By making the finding that there is an immediate need to take action, and that the need arose after the agenda was posted, if the council approves adding this item, it will be considered at the end of Schedule Matters.
Okay, I'll make a motion for this agenda item to be added, with staff recommendation, to be added to Schedule Matters.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Call for the vote. Passes five-zero. Moving on to oral communication. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matters of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Less additional time is authorized by the council. All commentary shall be limited to three minutes.
You're gonna get me two times tonight. Edith LeVon, address on record. I travel Villa at least twice a day. One to go into town or wherever I'm going, whether it's right or left from my street. Oftentimes, more often. The striping that was put in was very faint to begin with, and it's nonexistent in some areas. Now, I've run into a problem in that, three times now, when I'm making a left turn onto Putnam to go to my doctor's, and I go at least once a week, depending on which doctor it is, I've damn near been hit, pardon the language, by vehicles that are extended or don't know what the lines are. And it's...some of them, in the case of like the big extended trucks, it's not their fault. It just is...the way it was done and the way, not knowing where it is, they're having problems. And I know you want to wait until you've got everything done on Villa, but it's my understanding that there's only the bridge left to do. Can't you do the rest of the area? And I know, you can't take care of this, but it is a safety hazard. And since I travel it every day because I don't want to go on the more heavily-traveled roads, Villa's heavy enough. The other thing is, last Friday, the Chamber of Commerce had their business showcase. Now, I haven't missed a one. And it was really fun to go there. My body didn't let me even stay an hour because I can't stand that long, even moving. I still am limited. But it was wonderful. And I didn't see anybody there when I was there. And I think that it is your responsibility as citizens, representing the citizens, to see what is happening in our town. And this represents the businesses. So the next time they do it, which will be next September, I would love to see you guys there. there, at least one of you. Now, I have run into him in some instances and you went to the library, Mayor, I know that, but I don't see very many other people out. I know you're not paid, but this is a wonderful town to live in. Please represent us and be there so we can see you more.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let me get all ready for y'all. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Taha Saleh, address on file. I'm here on behalf of the Porterville Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for that lovely review of our business showcase. It was fabulous and we had some great food, some great people out there dressed up in the western. It was awesome. So, we look forward to seeing everybody next year with a new theme. And if you have any idea for themes, come by the chamber and let us know.
Please address the council at this time, sir.
My apologies. Upcoming events. So tomorrow morning is our monthly Coffee with the CEO at 9:00 a.m. down at Stafford's. They have amazing coffee, as we all know. Come see us and talk to us and see what's happening in the town. On the 18th, at 11:30, you can join us for ribbon cutting at Sequoia Little Oaks, which is part of Sequoia Christian Academy. On that same day, at 2:00 p.m., we have another ribbon cutting for the grand unveiling of the Wall of Honor at Sierra Hills. On the 25th, at 5:30, we will be having a Business After Hours mixer with Porterville College and the Porterville College Foundation in their new Sage Building. On the 26th, at 11:30 a.m., you can join us for another ribbon cutting at the Porterville store to celebrate the opening of their new location. And what a new location it is, if you haven't been out there. It's fabulous. And on the 27th, at 5:00 p.m., join us for the Redo It Block Party. There will be food, live music and a doc grade at 6:00 p.m. And lastly, our next Friday, First Friday Coffee is October 3rd at 7:00 a.m. at Galaxy Theaters and will be hosted by Valley Strong Credit Union. This is just a small example of what the Porterville Chamber of Commerce is doing to promote your vision of an amazing town and look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Martha Flores, address on file. Mayor and members of council, I am here as a standalone and I am not in alignment with anyone in the council chambers this evening. I am here to publicly address Councilmember Beltran. You are not my district representative. I have continued to observe you, even after we worked together on the dais as colleagues. We were not always in agreement. Today, I am here to thank you for your preparation for council meetings, your articulation and your decision-making, most of all, in your transparency and your ethics and in the overall quality of life for the city of Porterville. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Cheyenne Ortiz and my address is on file. I'm here once again to speak about something very close to my heart, bringing an animal sanctuary to Porterville. I want to remind you that I am still here, still committed and still fighting for this vision. Our community has a growing need for a safe and sustainable place for animals. Too often, strays, abandoned or neglected pets are left without options and families who want to help simply don't have the resources. An animal sanctuary would not only give these animals a second chance, but would also create opportunities for community involvement, education and even partnerships with support, mental health and wellness. I've been working to build Willow and Whiskers, a mobile pet grooming service that provides compassionate and affordable care. This is just the first step in a larger vision, to create a sanctuary that serves both animals and people. My long-term dream is an oasis where Porterville families can connect with animals in a healing environment, combining pet care, education and community support. I know this project will take time, effort and collaboration, but I want you to know that I am prepared to put in the work and I am ready to partner with the city and local programs and with community members who share this goal. Every step I have taken has been towards building a foundation for the sanctuary. Porterville deserves to be known as a city that values compassion, responsibility and innovation. By supporting this project, you are not only helping animals, you're helping families, children and future generations who will benefit from a stronger sense of community and care. Thank you for your time and for your continuing to hear me out. I may not have all the resources yet, but I have the determination, the vision and the willingness to keep showing up. I will keep fighting for the sanctuary and I truly hope that together we can make it a reality for Porterville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Before we go on, I do have to point out someone in the audience, one of Senator Gross's staff, Kyle Savage. It's great to have you in town, sir. Yeah.
Go ahead. Okay. Russell Bencourt, address is on file. I just wanted to say something, well, I wanted to actually talk about the Constitution Week that's on the Consent calendar, but before I go on to that, I just want to say right now that I'm disgusted by what just happened. Why? Because you just made this moment of silence partisan. You did exactly what the media's done. Talk about Charlie Kirk. He was assassinated, he was murdered and that shouldn't happen in our country. I agree with you on that. I agree, no one for using free speech should be murdered. But what you failed to mention is what happened that same day. We've been doing it the last several meetings, children were killed in school again, weren't they? They were, in Colorado, that same day that he was murdered, they were murdered too by right-wing extremists. Proven that that happened. He was murdered by an alt-right extremist. He was actually talking to people and they told him, "You should go pro it," with that murder of Charlie Kirk. That's disgusting. That is disgusting. And I thought better of you, I thought that you would actually mention both of those because that happened on the same day. Now, moving on to what I really want to talk about was the proclamation of Constitution Week. I'm glad that you guys have that on here. We should do that. And I noticed that you're one of the sponsors for it because this was brought about by the Daughters of the American Revolution. I want to know that they have a checkered history, you know, and they started out in the late 1800s. By 1913, they were for women's rights. A lot of those members marched in the women's suffrage movement at that time, but then they also played a race card in the late 20s and early 30s. We know in 1932, what they do. They said no longer blacks could perform in Constitution Hall. In fact, Eleanor Roosevelt resigned as a member during that time. And the president at that time said, "That's not what the Constitution stands for." It took them about 20 years to get their act back together, right? And they did not have that as a law anymore. In fact, they've gone even further now. They support a project to identify African-Americans, Native Americans and individuals of mixed race who were patriots of the American Revolution. In fact, they published a book, Forgotten Patriots, African-American and American-Indian Patriots in the Revolutionary War. And then in, just in 2023, what they did, they voted to change their bylaws to add this, that the chapters may not discriminate against eligible applicants based on race, religion, sexual orientation. And now they actually have a transgender in their organization. So I just wanted to thank you guys because we know that these DEI policies that they have are what the Constitution stands for. Because it stands for we, the people, all the people, everybody in the United States. So thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Good afternoon, council. I'm come to you as a concerned mother. My name is Jennifer Paraguyer. I moved to this small town in 2013, fell completely in love with this city. Coming from a big city to a small town, I fell in love with the people, with the community here, with the educational system, my neighbors. I've grown to love every part of it. I know no town is perfect. They have their ups and downs, but there is something that I'm very concerned. Like I said, I am a mother. I do have a college student currently right now, Porterville College. I do work full-time, my husband as well. We leave the house really, really early and our concern is the bus routes that were canceled. The, I think the Route Four and Six, one of them is for Porterville College for the students and one of them is for the clinic at the 190. And my concern is getting these students to college. Like I said, my home has mom and dad, we're able to navigate, take my daughter at 7:00 in the morning. She doesn't start school till 9:20, so she sits at the library, she reads, she does homework. But I don't get off till 4:30 p.m., so therefore she sits there, she gets out around 12:50 or so, depending on the date. She has to wait sometimes four hours, four hours and a half until I'm able to pick her up. My concern is, okay, she has a ride. Me and her dad are figuring it out. I'm thinking about all the other students out there that live in rural areas, that have our one household, that don't have enough money. Because I know that there is something that you guys did. I think I went over to speak with Kira, the manager in the bus station. She told me there's like another, another thing you guys are offering to the community for, there's seven vans, she said, that give rides. The problem with that is that we downloaded the app, we were ready to put money in to get the rides going, but unfortunately, we weren't ever able to get a ride. So when I talked to Kira, the manager, she said that she had a single mom there yesterday and the student tried about 50 times to get a ride to college, so he couldn't, so he couldn't go, so he missed. So my concern is if, how many more kids out there are suffering? And again, these rides, they're charging $5 per ride. They'll take you in a weary town. But can you imagine $5 to go to college, $5 to go back home? Not everyone in this town can afford that. So I'm concerned how many students are getting even more depressed and they're taking the opportunity of their education. So I just hope that.
Please summarize, ma'am. You have 30 seconds to summarize.
Just, I just hope that the council of Porterville does what it's been doing all these years that I've lived here and is to advocate for those that are most in need. So I really hope that you guys can talk about it. I'm going to continue to connect with people at Porterville College and the students there so they can bring your concerns. I know if my daughter's suffering, I know there's so many more students that are, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hi, Jean Vafiatis, and you have my address online.
What was your name, ma'am?
Jean Vafiatis. I have two legal concerns I would like for the council, the legal council to hear tonight. One, is it legal for the employees of the city to be directed by the members of the city council to write political letters and send them regarding non-city-related political issues? Can our tax dollars be used to support the council's personal political ideas that are not Porterville city issues? That's one. Two, is it legal for the mayor, acting in the mayor role, to encourage citizens to contact politicians regarding non-city-related political issues to follow your personal interpretations of the political issues? As we saw at the last city council meeting, our mayor tends to voice his personal political issues even if they are not fully researched. A separate issue I would like to address is I would like to encourage the city council members to show respect for the former city council members. It's not proper or respectful for current city council members to make disparaging remarks in the city or public meetings about former city council members or issues. I also want to remind current city council members, when you brag about constructive changes and improvements in Porterville, give credit to the past city council for the changes they initiated, such as the road repairs and the new park, et cetera. And also regarding something today, I wish we'd had a moment of silence. We're the two, look it up here, two people that, husband and wife, that were slaughtered politically just a few months ago. And what about the children still in all these different schools having problems and now having drills for shooters? I think we got a lot of things that need to be taken care of. Let's stick to the Porterville-related city issues and not our personal political point of view. This is a diverse community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Brock Neely, address on record. So you want to put a voter ID charter amendment out there. How much is that costing the city of Huntington Beach right now in legal fees, fighting it at the state level? How many million? How many million you want to piss away? You also want to spend $800,000 on a playground that you're going to unlawfully name the USS Porterville. There's only one organization that can name ships, that's the United States Navy. There was a USS Porterville, by the way. It's in mothballs. The other thing is all the disparaging remarks you made earlier, that three-quarters of them were lies. But you know what? Like the gentleman said about the kids in Colorado, you poor birders don't give a shit about the kids after they're born.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Is there anyone else?
My name is Charles Wistand. I'm the Porterville Recorder Editor, 1141 Atkins Way, Porterville. At the last meeting, the mayor made a remark about how he thought he was misquoted in the paper concerning the gerrymandering and two-state issue. And he made that comment publicly and that was the first I heard of it. I would welcome anybody on the council. I would prefer anybody in the council, city staff, the entire community. If you have a problem with what we put in the newspaper, I would like to hear about it first. I more than welcome that input. And again, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Charles, and great work in the recorder you're doing. Is there anyone else?
Greg Shelton, 80, North Wilford Drive. Just to clarify, we are going to have, we reopened a public hearing on the development project on Henderson, is that correct? All right, that'll give me time to talk about something else. Item in Schedule Matters number 20, it's about the potential utility district Strathmore. I'm going to tell you a brief story, I only got three minutes, but about 13 years ago, I sat up there in that dais and I had the state come to us and they said that they wanted us to hook up the Atkins Water District and in turn, they would give us, they would pay for a well. I didn't agree with that, I voted against it, it got passed. All the hookups were put in, we hooked up the water, it came time to pay for the well. All of a sudden, the state decided that they had calculated incorrectly that the amount of hookups didn't justify a whole well, so they wanted to pay us for half a well. And at that time, I was losing a million dollars, so they're going to give us a half a million dollars. And we argued and I think we even had to go to litigation before it was all over, we just, we took the half a million. But by that time, the price of the well went up to 2 million, so we got a quarter of a well. So I don't care what they say about, listen, just tell us if you have the capacity and we'll, there's no obligations. I'm telling you, if you let the camel's nose in the flap of the tent, you're going to have a problem here. This is not something we want. We have enough capacity with our system as it is right now, but what happens is all you end up doing is you end up cheap selling your capacity. Because once you run out of capacity, it's not about, oh, we'll just expand the system. No, it's a whole new system, a whole new tertiary system. The system we have now, inexpensive, reliable, good for 12, 13 more years at the very least. If we sell our capacity for what's no more than a hookup fee, then if you get a subdivision that comes in town or you get a big developer that wants to do some, a big commercial project, you won't have the capacity. And then you will really lose because you can't sell, you subdivision, you make much more than you And then you will really lose, because you can't sell, you subdivision, you make much more than you get by just giving some services. So I'm telling you from the voice of experience, we've tried this before, many times, and got burnt every time. Now, on number, uh, number twenty-one, uh, I, I read that it's about the cannabis and about, we have grants. And I was wondering why we were gonna give grants to for-profit businesses. I don't think that Don Vino's needs a subsidy, but I do believe that some of the nonprofits could probably use it. So if we give that away, I, I would hope that we would prioritize the nonprofits before any of the other. I'll hold the rest of the thing for the, for Schedule Matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
How's it going? My name is Giovanni Esquero. I'm the owner of J Smog, down on Henderson. I'm fairly new in town. Um, I wanted to bring up an issue I'm having here in town. Uh, I've been open for about five months here in town, and there happened to be another uh smog shop. I'm a smog shop, so I smog vehicles, and I also do the heavy-duty emission testing for California, the new program. Um, and my issue is that uh I came through the city, waited a whole month. I went through the county, I got my name, I got everything on my licensing, and then uh there's another gentleman here in town that basically put the same exact name as mine. The only thing that difference is, is an apostrophe. So I went through county, I went through the state, I went through bar. They, they couldn't do nothing, the county couldn't do nothing. Uh, he was operating without a license, they sent him a notice. And my um issue is, I wanted to see if you guys can make something or do something about that change in name, because the, the only difference is an apostrophe. That difference mining from his name. We're both smog shops in town. He's uh probably a couple of months newer, um, new fairly, but that's just a big issue. Because if he's doing stuff illegally, I don't want anything to come back to me. Or if he's doing people bad things, I just don't wanna be affiliated with it. Like I said, I came to the um city, I talked to them, no one could do anything. And it's an issue that no one has came across, and I just wanted to um address that.
Thank you for the information. If you leave your information with staff, maybe we can get some answers for you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I'm not seeing anyone else. Oh, the fake.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, just for the record, my name is Kyle Savage. I have the honor and privilege of representing State Senator Shannon Groves' office for the Twelfth Centorial District, California. Just coming by to be able to kind of share a brief legislative update. Um, the legislation themselves have already been done for now. They're gonna be part of their interim study recess, which is gonna be from now until about the second week of January. So I do wanna say and ask, if you do have any events or anything in mind, they're gonna be coming henceforth within these next coming months before January, please feel free to reach out, so that we can kinda schedule the senator's, uh, schedule a little bit that way, is kinda get her down here to see if she'd be able to attend any of the events. I do know that especially during the holidays, there's a lot of parades, there's a lot of things like that, you know, be able to be a part of. Um, I do know that as of these past few days, especially on Saturday, it's on Governor Newsom's desk right now, which the senator is super happy about, which would be uh S B two thirty-seven, which is going to increase and basically focus on actually mining oil in Kern County again, to basically bring back the California uh energy crisis that we've been facing every day. Because it takes about a million barrels of oil per day to be transported into the state of California, which we don't know ethically how that is being produced in other countries and other areas. And so why not use the actual necessities we need in the state itself within Kern County? Um, especially during the summer as well, we were able to donate over fifteen hundred backpacks to local nonprofit organizations throughout Kern County. Um, they weren't able to come back to, to Tulare County, but we were able to uh disperse that amount. Um, other than that, we were unfortunate to see that S B seven twelve, which was more commonly known as Leno's Law, was not passed through the Assembly Suspense File in the Appropriations Committee. Uh, so that unfortunately was not gonna be passed through. Uh, we were able to see our G M E, uh, G M E bill, which would be able to provide funding for a medical program uh for graduate students to be able to get into graduate programs to become doctors and whatnot. And then that program funding would then come back into the valley as well as they stay here, and they use that programming to become doctors and so forth in their graduate programs. Uh, other than that, we also have our, uh, I can't remember the exact number. I think it's the two fifty-three, but it is the bill that was also co-authored with Paris Hilton. That's gonna be our non-secretarian public schools that are not within California. We wanna make sure that they are taken care of, that there's securing funding to ensure that they're actually able to go to schools that aren't within the state system. Um, other than that, uh, the senator wants to appreciate all your guys' hard work. Thank you very much for taking care of the city of Porterville. You guys have my contact information. If you don't, it means I don't like you enough, and I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. You guys all have my contact information. So if you guys ever need anything, please feel free to reach out. The senator greatly appreciates all your guys' hard work, so thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Oh, I thought Ms. Capone was coming up to the mic. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else, so we will move on to reports. Uh, this is the time for all committee, commission, board reports, subcommittee reports, and staff informational reports. Uh, city manager? Oh, well, I, I guess I could kinda take it. We'll move on to uh city commission and committee meetings, Parks and Leisure Service Commission. Is there anyone here? Ms. Capone? You should've just stayed up.
I didn't know it would be that fast. Thank you. Hi, I'm Kathy Capone. I'm a Parks and Leisure Commissioner. Um, so are you ready? Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm a Parks and Leisure Service Commissioner. Um, one night, one night remains in the thirteenth annual corporate game, with the darts event taking place right here in city council chambers tomorrow night. Thirteen teams are vying for the coveted corporate cup. You can see from the standings where Team City of Porterville sits. Where does Team City of, one oh four? The top vote getter is one twelve. Close, City of Porterville. As for sports, youth soccer is halfway through its season, with games played Saturdays at the Sports Complex. Youth basketball registration begins tomorrow at seven thirty A M. The league typically fills up within a day. The annual Pioneer Days and Rib Cookoff Zalid House fundraiser returns to Main Street October fourth, eleven A M to three thirty, to three P M. I'll be there. Uh, registration is currently taking place for the Rib Cookoff teams. The event will also include a pageant, live shootout, historical displays, music, and more. A ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Tulie River Parkway Phase Three, followed by a five K walk run sponsored by the Tulie River Parkway Association, will take place October eleventh. The ribbon-cutting will be at eight thirty A M, with the five K beginning at nine A M. Sign-ups for the five K have opened. Um, if anyone would like information about how to sign up for the five K, please contact me. They're available on a website called RunSignUp, RunSignUp.com. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Capone. Sorry for messing up your name. And I gotta tell you, uh, great job on the report, but I wanna say also, great job on the Tulie River Parkway. It's, it just looks amazing. I went and did a tour of it with the vice mayor, uh, maybe a month ago, and the, and the dead heat too, right? When everything's supposed to be dead, and it just was gorgeous.
Name of plants. They can make it in our heat, because this is where they live.
Now, it's great work in there. That's what I, I have to tell you. Uh, to my counsel bringing it back, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I do, Mayor. Um, Kathy, I just wanna say outstanding work. And I noticed that, um, uh, you also have biodiversity day coming up.
That was last Saturday, yes.
That last Saturday, and then you have, um, you got the five K, and then on the eighteenth, you have the nature tour?
Yes.
And then on Saturday, November first, you got the Foothill Festival River Ranch event?
Yes, we'll be attending that. That's a great event up at, at River Ridge Ranch outside of Springville.
And also, uh, in November, on the fifteenth, there's gonna be another nature tour. So really excited to see all the stuff. And we went to an event the other night, and I was bragging about the Parkway and what you've done down there too, all the folks at the.
Thank you very much. And we've started with the first big sign, and now that all of the signposts, uh, there's a signpost at every garden, and it's painted red, so it's easy to see. Thank you very much for your comments.
Phenomenal work.
Yes, great work. No other comments?
I have one thing. Ms. Capone?
Capone.
But Capone.
I, I said that.
I'm sorry.
Call me late to dinner.
I'm sorry. It's been a long, uh, week, but, um, I've been to your, the Tulare, Tulare.
Tulie River.
Tulie River Parkway, and, and it's an exciting place. Um, I, I love the plants. Uh, is your, um, uh, assistant, have she painted the, uh, butterflies on the, on the roadway?
Yes, Cindy Sanchez, one of our board members has done that.
An outstanding lady, and I really appreciate everything that you're doing, and it looks fabulous, and it just looks very nice. Um, I can't wait to it, uh, start walking it over and over again over the seasons, so. You're doing a fabulous job. Thank you very much, and you're, you're an icon for that place. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the, the city's work in improving the visitor amenities along the Parkway.
You're very welcome. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, man, it sounds like someone needs to be inducted into the Porterville Hall of Fame, huh? Okay, I'll move on to the Library and Literacy Commission. You weren't lying.
I don't lie. You may not like what I say, but I don't lie.
Sometimes the truth hurts.
No, the problem is, if you lie, you gotta remember what you said.
That's true.
And I'm older than you by a long shot. And you too. Um, Fernando did the, okay, I was supposed to give a PowerPoint presentation, and I'm not gonna give it to you this time. I'm gonna come next meeting and get, I'm gonna personally walk over what.
Is there, do you wanna hold your report until next meeting?
Uh, not totally.
I see what you're doing here. Okay.
I'm not stupid.
Well, let's hear it, ma'am.
Okay, the Porterville Public Library will be conducting its annual Family Literacy Day this Saturday. I'm inviting the five of you to come. I've seen you there before. I will be there by representing both the library and the little library system. I have two little libraries, one for adults and Big Bird. Guess who's Big Bird's when you open his mouth? Who the book's in there for?
Saturday at what time? Let's get that on record.
I'm not sure. Tommy, do you know? The literacy day, what time?
Ten A M it starts.
Okay, I was gonna say eleven. I forgot to get, I forgot to write it down. I remembered that it's literacy day, though. So I'll be there. The other thing is, every couple of years, every, I give a PowerPoint. But I'm gonna do something different this time. It's not gonna be the regular stats. We have wonderful summer programs, and you were there, so I know you know some of them. And that's what I'm gonna be featuring. And that's why I wanted pictures, because we had a lot of very active children. I thank the library for what it does for the youth of this community, town.
Thank you for your report. Okay, we'll move on to youth commission. Oh, yes. Uh, excuse me, would you come back up to the mic? Tapper. Could you come back up to the mic? Vice Mayor has some comments.
Esther or Kathy?
Esther.
Edith.
No, I, I just wanted to say thank you for all you do for the library. I was at a great meeting with the library leadership, we're working on a program for twenty twenty-six. And I'm hopeful to get a chance to speak with you too about that, because we wanna develop the heritage. We have a, we're putting a, um, a reading program together around the celebration of America, two hundred and fifty years, but also around Porterville. And I'd really like to get your input on that and collaborate with you as we go through next year. So I just wanna open up those lines of communication.
I would like to tell you one thing. I'm old. Not as old as.
You said that already.
I'm not as old as Methuselah, but a different story. I moved to Porterville in nineteen fifty-nine. From Berkeley. Culture shock. The library.
That explains a lot.
Hey, I saw hippies. That was the beginning, from beatniks to hippies. I have used the library since then, and when they opened on Sundays, it was a blessing, because we walked from our church, which was the Episcopalian Church, to the library every Sunday with my mom. And my mom was blind, so the books she read was a little different. But she taught us the importance of reading, and that's why you see me here. And the literacy program is why I joined the committee, because putting people to work when, in the nineties, especially when we closed many factories, it was my job to provide services to those people. And I learned that a lot of them were wonderful workers, but illiterate and couldn't fee, complete a resume on their own, or a applicant, an application. That's why I'm here, and this is my fourth term. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your commentary. Yeah, you know, I used to walk to school, ride my bike too. I didn't need a bus. I'm old too, back in the good old days. And I'm really glad that, uh, we go to church on Sunday too. You know, most people don't know this, but most of Americans learned how to read from the Holy Bible, because that's the only Bible, that's the only book they had. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to youth commission. I'm not seeing anyone. Uh, Two-Tot Transactions and Youth Tax Oversight Committee. Anyone from there? I'm not seeing anyone. We'll move on to staff informational reports, Water Conservation Phase Two. Um, we all had an opportunity to look at this. Um, does anybody have any questions for staff? No? Well, I, I would just make one statement, uh, observation. Uh, you know, going to three-day watering, uh, Mr. Alvarez, if, if you could help us, and just kinda pre-gaming, because I know on the agenda, there's also to go, uh, I think back to phase, is it two or four?
Yeah, on the consent calendar, there is a, an intent to set a public hearing to consider if we should change from phase two as we enter the winter months.
Right, into phase three, right?
Potentially, yeah.
Yes, and so just looking at the consumption, uh, from this year to last year, and us going to three-day watering, the consumption is the same.
Yeah, the, I'm sorry.
Oh, you got a mic right there. I like this. This is a good change. Okay.
So we, we did notice that from June through August of twenty twenty-five, the conservation levels are similar to twenty twenty-four. Slightly less than twenty-two or twenty-three, um, but I think we need more data to, uh, determine the impact of phase two conservation plan, uh, for the long-term conservation efforts.
Yeah, and I, I think it's just a good, uh, representation of, of the efforts of our constituents that are conserving water and realize how important it is. So I, I just thought it was neat. We, we released the reins or took a little bit of the overreaching of the government hand off the people and gave them ability to water, and they still conserve, uh, while not being so restrictive. So I just thought it was a good thing to point out.
Um, you know, and I'm looking forward to seeing that data. I know it's been a cooler summer statistically. Um, in fact, we haven't had a measurable hurricane all year, so. Um, and we're past the peak of the hurricane season, something I know about in my business. But what I really like about this is we did give some of the power back to the people and building trust with the people and not being so heavy-handed, but the people can trust the people to conserve the water. And it's important to understand a couple of aspects of that. If you water more frequently, a, a shorter amount, less of that goes off into the gutter, and so the water is more effective. And then the other thing I believe that in, in operations, and maybe you can confirm this, that having at a little bit more level across the week is a little bit easier on operations. Could you confirm or deny that?
Uh, that is true. Um, I spoke with David Payne, uh, who is the water superintendent, and he says that, uh, the system likes, uh, to stay at a steady state. The on and off of pumps.
Yeah.
Does possess, uh, pose problems with the, uh, piping, the system itself, yeah.
The water hammering is what ends up happening, right? Because we have a gravity-fed system, and you're pushing water, water coming back. You create water hammers, which creates breaks in our lines. Um, and then also the wear and tear on our pumps, right? Our booster pumps and every, so.
Yeah, that is correct. The longer they run, the, the more wear there is on there, yeah.
Wonderful. So it's just a great thing to see right before us. It's, it's a great report. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Is there any other comments, uh, from the council? Nope, not seeing any? Okay, we'll move on to the Fall Community Cleanup Event. Um, would you, uh, Robert, would you like to speak to this, or?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. The staff report provides information about the city of Porterville's Fall Twenty Twenty-Five Community Cleanup Event scheduled for Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, from eight A M to two P M at the city's Corporation Yard located at five 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 North Prospect Street. The event allows city residential refuse customers to dispose of general trash, bulky items, mattresses, wood waste, yard clippings, and e-waste free of charge. Proof of residency through a current refuse bill is required, and trailers are limited to a maximum length. to a maximum length of 10 feet. Residents are responsible for unloading their own vehicles, and business and/or commercial waste will not be accepted. Unacceptable items include hazardous waste, tires, refrigerators, and oversized auto parts. The city is partnering with Tulare County Environmental Health to host a household hazardous waste and e-waste collection event at Tulare County Fire Station 19, located at 22315 Avenue 152, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM on the same day. This provides residents with a safe disposal option for items such as household chemicals, used motor oil, paint, automotive batteries, and fluorescent tubes. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you, Mr. Alvarez, and we love seeing this come forward. October 18th, Community Cleanup, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So is there any other comments from the council? I'm not seeing any. So we'll move on to Consent Calendar. All Consent Calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters, and unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. How does council want to go forward? Is there any items that you'd like to pull for discussion?
If there are none, I'll make the motion to accept items 1 through 15.
Okay, I'll second that motion. If there's no other discussion, we'll call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to our first public hearing, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The first public hearing tonight is a continued public hearing for consideration of an amendment to the land use element of the 2030 General Plan and an ordinance amending Series 200 of the Chapter 21 of the Porterville Municipal Code pertaining to an increase in residential densities in the RM3 Zone District. And I've asked Director Claudia to provide the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening. That echoes a little bit. The... This first public hearing was first scheduled for a public hearing on September 2nd, 2025, but it was continued due to a noticing concern with a related agenda item. So the hearing was opened and then continued to today's meeting on September 16th, 2025. So as you know, California has passed several laws like SB 330, SB 8, SB 9, and basically to help with the statewide housing shortage. These laws make it harder for cities to reduce the amount of land available for housing. So if a city wants to change a residential area to something else like retail, it must make up for... Make up for it by allowing housing somewhere else or upzoning it. This is called the no-net-loss rule. So back in 2021, City Council directed staff to look at ways to slightly increase housing density in certain areas, especially where homes already existed. The proposal is to increase the number of allowed housing units in the RM3 or high-density residential zone from 30 to 30.5 units per acre. And while this is a small increase, it would allow about 90 more potential housing units across the city. So this change supports the city's general plan policy to allow efficient growth within existing neighborhoods, also known as infill development. It is also related to what's separate from a proposal to change of properties used from housing to retail center. Increasing RM3 density helps make sure we're not losing housing overall. So as far environmental impacts, the city reviewed the proposed change to slightly increase housing density from 30 to 30.5 units per acre and found it does not create any new or more severe environmental impacts, because the change is small and technical and no major environmental review is needed. So the city selected environmental consultant LSA to prepare an addendum to the existing environmental impact report, originally certified in 2008. The analysis confirmed that the density increase is within the scope of the general plan, EIR, and will not have new or more severe significant effect, and that no new mitigation measures are required, therefore no subsequent EIR or further CEQA review is required prior to the approval of the proposed density increase in the general plan in RM3 District. And adoption of an addendum is appropriate. Aside from any noticing associated with related entitlements, there is no public comment period for an addendum. So the recommendation before council today is to open the continued public hearing and receive public comments regarding the proposed general plan amendment and ordinance. Find that the proposed amendments are exempt from CEQA under CEQA Guideline Section 15164. Adopt the draft resolution approving the addendum to the Porterville 2030 General Plan EIR and the amendment to the land use element of the 2030 General Plan, and approve for first reading the draft ordinance increasing density in the RM3 High Density Residential District from 30 units per acre to 30.5 units per acre. Read by title only, waive further reading, and order the ordinance to print. And staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Director Calderon. And bringing it back to the council, this is exactly what we've been asking for from our staff, trying to find ways, look at ordinances that we can change to create more business in town, bring jobs and wealth to our community. So exciting to see this coming forward. Is there any comments from the council?
Mayor, if I may, there's a slight typo in the resolution where we identify at the very last sentence of the third whereas, we identify that the use designation is changing from 24 units per square acre to 30.5 units, and it should be 30 to going to 30.5.
Okay, so we'll need to add that into our motion. If we're entertaining one, does council have any comments?
I have a brief one, if I may.
Go ahead.
Overall, you know, to the mayor's comments, yeah, absolutely, this will hopefully add potential development in some of these areas where I was looking for more housing. The only thing, a kind of comment, doesn't really affect this, necessarily this motion or action, is just hopefully looking up... When we're looking at our next 30-year general plan, that's going to be coming up soon, is looking at the quadrant in the map. If you kind of divide the city up into four kind of sections, kind of mostly like the main arteries of the city, the northwest kind of quadrant has very little density. And my concern, not necessarily with this one, but in not addressing the general plan in the future, is that there's a lot of concentration of this residential high density is concentrated in that kind of older part of town where there's already a lot of traffic congestion. The schools are kind of landlocked. They really can expand. So just looking at in the forward-looking, when we look at our next general plan, that we may look at rezoning kind of the northeast section of town to kind of have a little more relief on this, on the other sections that, you know... Can they have more apartments and what have you? They can, but if you look at the maps that are available to us, it's just they're very concentrated in certain parts of town. It'd be nice to kind of evenly disperse those a little bit better. City doesn't have a whole lot to do with what developers choose to do, but in the future, when this zoning changes might happen like we are here, that that gets looked at. But again, that's for a future council. But just looking at this map, it was almost a little bit just kind of one-sided of where a lot of the apartments are. But no, this is again, it says potentially for 90 additional residential units for individuals in the community, so it looks like we're moving in a good direction.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Is there any other comments?
Mayor, before you... We need to make sure we... It's a continued public hearing, so we do need to ask for or acknowledge that the reopen the public hearing.
Okay, got you. So we'll continue the public hearing, and I'll just continue it on and open it up at 7:29. If anybody would like to come forward and give comments. I'm not seeing anyone, so we'll close the public hearing at 7:29. And then bringing it back to council for dialogue, is there any other comments or questions to staff?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. With that, I will make a motion with the amended... You said Section 2 on the whereas? Or excuse me, it's 24, we're changing it to 30?
Yes, yes, Your Honor, in the draft resolution.
In the draft resolution, okay. So with that amendment, I make an emotion to go forward with this ordinance change.
Just for clarification, you're moving for staff recommendations to basically 2 through 4, yeah?
Yes. With the amendment.
Gotcha.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. If there's no other conversation, we'll call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to public hearing number 17.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is again a continued public hearing to consider the final environmental impact report, commonly referred to as the EIR, for the Henderson Commercial Development, amending the general plan to reflect the land use designation for the site to retail centers and approving the conditional use permit for PRC-201824-C. And I'll turn the time over to Director Calderon for the staff report.
Thank you, and good afternoon again. So I'll provide a summary. I know I provided the whole report last time. It was pretty lengthy. So I'm going to provide a shorter summary this time. The full summary is on record, so people can go back and look at it as well, and it was provided in the staff report again. And if there's anything that you want me to add to it afterwards, please let me know. So the Henderson Commercial Development Project is a new shopping center that is being proposed to be built on a northwest corner of the state route, 65 and West Henderson Avenue. The land is about 10.5 acres and includes six parcels. The proposed project includes around 92,000 square feet of stores and restaurants, a grocery store with alcohol cell, 24-hour pharmacy, three quick-serve drive-through buildings that are approximately 78,000 square feet. So infrastructure will also be required, such as a new eastbound left-turn lane off Henderson Avenue, monument and prail signs that are between 20 to 80 feet, and lighting, parking, and landscaping. So there are entitlements needed for this project. The two are... The first is a general plan amendment to change the planned land use of APN 246240-020 from low-density residential to retail centers. And the second component is a conditional use permit to allow a commercial establishment larger than 50,000 square feet or more and to accommodate type 21 off-sale general alcohol license. So if approved, a letter of public conveniency or necessity will be sent from the mayor to ABC in support of the issuance of the type 21 ABC license, as the ABC has determined that the census tract of the project site is otherwise over-concentrated. Additionally, an environmental impact report, or EIR, was prepared to assess the project's potential environmental impacts. The noticing required by CEQA has been followed as outlined in the staff report, including adopting mitigating measures and preparing a monitoring plan. The EIR found that the majority of environmental categories such as aesthetics, water quality, public services, climate change, and more, that the project would have either no impact or less than significant impact. So the five areas found to have potentially significant impacts which required mitigation are the following. So air quality, the project would expose residents to harmful desert particulate matter, however, with strict equipment standards and emissions controls in place, these impacts would be reduced to less than significant. Biological resources, the site may affect sensitive species like the Swanson Hawk and a variation of the bumblebee. Through habitat protection, timing restrictions, and biological monitoring, these impacts are also reduced to less than significant. Cultural resources, if buried archaeological or human remains are uncovered, protocols are in place to ensure respectful and compliant handling. These impacts are mitigated to less than significant. Geology and soils, there's a potential for soil erosion and disturbance of paleontological resources. A stormwater pollution prevention plan and erosion controls will reduce impacts to less than significant. For transportation and traffic, there is... This is the only one where impacts remain significant and unavoidable. Even with fair share payments for intersection improvements, the project would degrade level of service to a key intersection by 2043, and this impact cannot be fully mitigated. So with regard to the one unavoidable impact remaining, the project's long-term economic and social benefits outweigh the residual traffic impacts. So these findings are included in a statement of overriding considerations in the draft CEQA resolution, recognizing that the project will reduce travel needs by locating retail near existing homes, lower costs for consumers and employees, and support local employment and economic growth. So the recommendation before council today is to open the continued public hearing to receive comments on the Henderson Commercial Project, adopt the draft resolution certifying the environmental impact report, and adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. Adopt the draft resolution amending the general plan to reflect the land use designation of the site, APN 246-240-020 as retail centers, and adopt the draft resolution approving the conditional use permit, which was PRC 2018-024-C. The applicant and also the environmental consultant that prepared the document are available for any questions as well as staff.
Thank you, Director Calderon. So at this time, bringing it back to the council, we will continue the public hearing and opening it back up at 7:36. If you have any comments, please come forward at this time.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dan Stein. I'm an attorney in Fresno, California, 8080 North Palm, Fresno. I represent Big Business, which is located at 1092 West Henderson in Porterville, California, and also they own HG Foods LLC that operates the Burger King that's right next door. I want to just raise a couple of issues that really I was very concerned about. Let's not talk about just growth for growth's sake. Let's talk about smart growth, not over-development. The thing I think that the city is doing here is pretty dangerous, which is setting a bad precedent, and that's really skipping the VMT analysis completely. This is a project that has 92,000 square feet of development, and the city has done no VMT analysis at all. And I have a real problem with that. My client does, too. So the problem here is, of course, that the land use designation for this project is regional retail center. So that's per the Porterville General Plan land use element? Excuse me. It's in close proximity to other regional retail stores. This is going to provide 11,000 daily trips to Henderson Avenue on top of what's already out there. The traffic study from 2023 doesn't even say that the city has designated the project as a local serving. The project description itself calls the project parcels as retail centers, and if you look at the land use element, the retail centers are defined to include design and use standards will be established for regional shopping centers located at major circulation intersections, large format or big-box retailers, and auto sales as well as travel-related services such as hotels and gas stations. So there's nothing in the way that the city has defined this property that would lead the city to conclude that this is simply local serving. If it's local serving, then you wouldn't have to do the VMT analysis, but everything that the city has suggests that it's not local serving. In addition, I've pointed out the Tulare County SB 743 guidelines to say, hey, if there's reasonable doubt, there should have been a market study that was done that would have confirmed whether that was local or regional serving. The city didn't require that study to be done. I talked about the state technical advisories. The technical advisory suggests that a project that has retail stores that include over 50,000 square feet should be evaluated under VMT analysis. So I think this is a real dangerous precedent that the city is adopting. I'd like to submit as part of the record my peer review of the traffic study. I'd also just like to point out that there's some concerns about the request for the statement of overriding considerations, and the statement of overriding considerations has to be based on a VMT analysis. It can't be done on a loss E.
Please summarize, sir. You have 30 seconds.
That's pretty much done. So I think overall, the city needs to be concerned. If we're going to follow what the city does here, if the city could build a 2 million-square-foot mall under this rationale, make the spaces inside it less than 25,000 square feet, and say there doesn't need to be a VMT analysis, and that's just simply not what the law requires, I'd really encourage you to scale down this project and deny it, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I have copies that I can submit for the record. Thank you.
Brock, nearly addressed on record. There's been a few projects that have been planned for that properties that are behind Burger King, and Burger King at every instance has stopped them. They kind of control the right-of-way going in and out. has stopped them. They kind of control the right of way going in and out of that properties, and they don't want to bend. They're afraid of competition coming in. If they had a decent product, they wouldn't have to worry about it. The food sucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Kathy Kuponey, address on record. I would like to see a careful consideration of traffic on Henderson. This is a very, very busy section of Henderson. In my estimation and lay estimation, it's it has, it's currently carrying more traffic than it can reasonably carry. As per Porterville standards, it's a very, very busy traffic area. So please look be, look at the traffic considerations and how to direct the traffic efficiently before you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuponey. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, my name is Phil O'Sullivan and staff. Hello. My name is Phil O'Sullivan with Henderson and sixty-five LLC, representing the applicant here tonight. With me as well are partners Tom O'Sullivan, Nick Freshu, and with us remotely is John Kinsey, our council. What's before you for consideration and approval tonight is the culmination of a great deal of work performed by city staff, consultants, and my team as well. And this great deal of work took place over a great deal of time. It was thoughtful, and it's before you here tonight. We're on hand for any additional questions you may have for us. But otherwise, we look forward to your conversation, consideration, and approval. Thank you very much.
We will close the public hearing. Yeah. Yes, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else with any comments?
Greg Shelton, eight eight North Wilford Drive. It's deja vu all over again. I watched this happen a decade ago with the Super Walmart when a when a group of
Labor negotiators hired a couple little patsies to stop the Super Walmart.
Is his mic on? Did your mic turn off?
Yeah, I don't care.
Well, we want people on the record to hear you.
Okay, then I'll repeat it. Basically, this happened a decade ago, a little later, earlier, when we had a group of individuals stop the Super Walmart citing all these similar concerns. So, you know, I find it interesting that we got the the schmarmy carpetbagger lawyer coming up here talking about the consideration, you know, of Porterville. I'm wondering where they were about the traffic study about the Lombardi School, you know. And so it's like, oh, my gosh, we have to stop this. This world's going to end. It's about one individual, another out-of-town business owner, who wants to have a monopoly and stop us out of sheer greed and selfishness. And I think it's silly. It's no worse than anything we do. If we're talking minutia here, well, if we just just called it something else, it would be okay. It's like, I doubt if we did that, that there would be a new excuse. So let's quit pussyfooting around right here and get this thing done and tell these out-of-town guys to stop, stop stopping choking Porterville down. We, you know, we need everything we can get, you know. As someone said, you know, if they had a better product, then they wouldn't have to worry about the competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Evening, gentlemen. Taha Saleh, address on file. This project has been years in the making, and there's been a lot of excitement of what this project could bring as far as different opportunities for businesses and growth. And all that experience from this council is pro-growth and pro-business and bringing more opportunities and jobs. So I think this, these group of individuals, these investors are well thought out, are community, most importantly, community members vested members. And I'd like to see that property go forward, and let's get developing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Taha. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else at this time. We'll close the public hearing at seven forty-five. Bring it back to the council. Does council have any comments? Councilman Rivas.
After reviewing the comments of citizens, stakeholders, I just have one, I just make a motion to recommend two, three, and four of staff recommendations. Let's move forward with this.
Okay, we do have a motion on the table. Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I had two simple notes on mind. There's a lot to read through. Was, my notes were Walmart two point oh and in traffic. So my main part was the traffic. And so going through staff meeting yesterday and kind of talking about that, that's not necessarily before us, but it is addressed on page forty-four and forty-five. It's acknowledging there needs to be some, some, you know, access for fire, for police, for safety. There is issues with the amount of traffic on Prospect and Henderson. So to Ms. Kuponey's point is, there is a lot of traffic in that area already. So I think with moving forward with a project like this, I have full faith in the growth and what's going to be able to accomplish here. There was a lot going into what it took to bring this project before us here. But now it's going to be the council's job and staff and planning department to figure out the traffic, whether that, and it acknowledges here either Bel Air, Mulberry, trying to figure out how to relieve traffic onto either Prospect and Henderson. So we will have that in mind. But I think I'll go back to my initial, and we do not want a Walmart two point oh. That's all.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Beltran. Vice Mayor McCurvy, you have any comments?
No, I just want to echo those comments. Very well thought out with Councilman Beltran. Traffic is a challenge on Henderson. And you'd have to remember, I travel that, too. A lot of the reason that traffic's really bad right now, Kathy, is because of Westfield, a lot of people going down there right now. We did have some great opportunity to improve that area with Caltrans recently. So we're going to keep a close eye on that. And as Councilman Beltran said, we're looking at other things we would do. The mitigation to twenty forty-three is, you know, it's fifteen years. We have some opportunities to mitigate in the future, I believe, strong opportunities. And I think that we should go forward with this. One of the things I'd like to ask, since we have people in the audience that are intimately familiar with this, is just to get on the record, how much time, how much effort, how much paper, I mean, how many reams of paper, and how many miles traveled just to get to this point? I think it's important to get that on the record. And I'd like to get a statement from you to try to illustrate that, if you would. And we talk a lot in our state and our city about growth and affordability and all this stuff. And what I want to get on the record is what it takes to get a project done now, and how much works against everybody. And that doesn't count, you know, the threats of litigation and all those things that come with it. But I'd just like to get that on the record so that the public can understand how hard it is to get a project like this across finish line.
And would you state how many years this has been in the making? I wouldn't mind hearing that number.
You bet. So I began day-to-day operations of this, of this project approximately six and a half years ago. The project itself actually was in its inception about nine years ago, if not a little bit north of that. When I began working day-to-day with Nick Freshu and Tom O'Sullivan, who happens to be my father, this is a family business, and we've been operating in Porterville for a long time. We, my first meeting was about six years ago. I think it was the first thing I did here with the city of Porterville. So the process started with a neg deck of this document, which is the version of the environmental review, where by CEQA standards, we looked at the operation and said, okay, great. The proposed use is not that different than existing uses in the area. We felt good about that. Circumstances changed, required us to do a full environmental review, which added six figures of expense to budget and at least sixteen months of time by my clock to get that thing done. It's a very long process. How much paper? Vice Mayor, I got to tell you, we do a lot of these things in PDF, thank goodness, because the document's about eight hundred pages long. And it's been through the grinder of reviews by city staff, who put an enormous amount of time into this, as well as the consultant, Crawford and Bowen, as well as our team and legal counsel as well. So these things go on. And this is the process and what it takes to get new businesses built.
Would you venture just a wild idea of how much a percentage it adds to the to the cost of the project? I mean, is it twenty-five percent of the project?
You know, that's a really good question. I don't think I'd want to speculate to that too much, largely because in the time it takes to get this project done, we've lived through multiple different iterations of an economy.
Right. And but six and a half years of our staff and your staff and all the state staff and all the staff that goes into this, that's going to be a large sizable figure. And I just want to get that on the record. And you don't have to answer anything specific.
I will, I will give you easily north of fifteen percent of the project, and likely more than that. But I would hesitate to dive in too closely. Because I think it's important to note that what we're doing here today is one step that allows us to get to the numerous other steps that we have to take to get this thing built. So from today to breaking ground, there's, there's a lot of, lot of ground to cover. And in that process, there's, we're going to go through evolutions of expenses and time and tenants, et cetera.
Thank you very much for stepping up. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you for your comments. Councilman Green, do you have any comments?
No, we are.
Okay, well, you know, like it has been stated, this is a decade in the making. And we have gone through all the steps to show proof that this project is is good for our community and well-intended, and it's going to be great. We're going to create jobs. We're going to create new tax revenue for the city as well. This is a big deal. And the people are begging for this. They were disappointed to see us come up short two weeks ago. So with that, I'd make a motion to go forward with staff recommendations, two through four. We already performed one.
You're seconding?
You're seconding?
Oh, well, I'm seconding Councilman Rivas, yes.
Real quick, I just wanted to address the direct comments that were made by Mr. Stein, which I believe were were also mentioned in what he had provided as far as his written comments. I just wanted to confirm, because I believe I, when he was up here bringing those up, I had seen those, and I believe they are addressed. But I thought it would be good to have our environmental consultant confirm on the record that those items that were brought up were in fact addressed in the, in the, in the report.
They are.
So I don't know if Jeff wants to do it, or if you want Emily to do it.
Sure. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, I'll touch on this. And if the environmental consultant, Emily Bowen, is also on Zoom there. So if she needs to elaborate, she can. The specific comments that were brought up related to vehicle miles traveled analysis. And the commenter has mentioned that the, he brought up the technical advisory on, on evaluating transportation impacts that the Office of Planning and Research had prepared a number of years ago, which is true. However, the city did subsequently adopt Tulare County's SB seven forty-three guidelines. So those are the guidelines that we follow, not the state's recommended guidelines. And they're totally acceptable. The city of Porterville adopted those a few years ago through the proper process. So that's the set of rules that we follow. As it relates to the distinction between local serving and regional serving, those comments are also addressed in our responses to the comments that are part of the final EIR. And I'll paraphrase what the traffic engineering consultant included in his responses to the comments, which are that this project has several components that are local-serving retail, including that it offers options for shopping locally in Porterville. It's surrounded by existing uses and is an infill project, so it will reduce travel distances. And that each of the shops will be relatively small in size, approximately twenty-five thousand square feet or smaller. However, although there's no, there's no specific number of square footage that is included in the adopted SB seven forty-three guidelines, however, the county's guidance cites case studies that a single retail use of up to eighty-seven thousand square feet can still qualify as a local-serving retail use. So the aggregate of ninety-two thousand, that includes multiple smaller shops, is not, is totally comparable to what the guidelines consider to be locally serving. And if you want more explanation, or if Emily feels the need to chime in, we can go that way, too.
Mr. O'Neill, thank you for that. And also just stating the fact that the city has done their due diligence on this project, a decade in the making. We have a first and a second. Is there any other comments?
I'd like to echo on my first statements. I just, I just want the people here to know that I understand that the traffic was brought up. And I based my assessment on the staff recommendations, and they did their due diligence. And they did do the research and other entities that were involved. So based on that, I don't want to hamper on this traffic. But I'm sure that we will be in a great position when the, this project comes to fruition. So with that, that's why I made my motion, because, you know, Porterville, city, city employees do their best. And I've seen that from time to time. And I trust their, their, their ability. So with that, I turn that back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Are there any other comments from staff on this matter as far as addressing some of the issues? Okay. With that, we have a first and a second. Let's call for the vote. Passes five zero. Okay, moving on to public hearing number eighteen. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this public hearing is for a text amendment to the Porterville Municipal Code, Chapter twenty-one, Series three hundred, Article three oh five regarding signs. And turn the time over to Director Calderon once again.
Thank you. All right. So this one you also have heard in the past. We brought it back for the public hearing. But it's basically, again, the amendment recommended or by City Council on June seventeenth to amend the sign ordinance, which is Article three oh five of the Porterville Development Ordinance. And in response to that, staff completed a comprehensive review and conducted some more outreach to community stakeholders, including business owners and developers. And consistent with those recommendations that the community members had, we went ahead and continued to make those amendments, in addition to the ones suggested at the last meeting where this was heard. And so the key amendments include permits are required only when sign triggers a building permit under the California Building Code Standards Code. When the zone, zone-specific sign standards have been removed in favor of consistent citywide requirements, aesthetic design principles have been eliminated to reduce subjectivity and regulatory burden, standards focused on health, safety, visibility, and traffic circulation, and those remain in place to ensure community protection. And again, the environmental coordinator has determined, based on substantial evidence, that the proposed text amendment is exempt from the California CEQA Act under Guideline Section fifteen zero six one B three, because the changes focus exclusively on administrative streamlining and eliminate audit provisions with no possibility of resulting in physical change to the environment. The exception is appropriate. So the recommendation before City Council is that the City Council open a public hearing and receive public testimony regarding the proposed text amendment, find that the proposed amendments are exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section fifteen oh six one B three, and approve the first reading of the ordinance adopting the text amendment to Article three oh five dash signs of the Porterville Development Ordinance. Read by title only. Way further reading and order the ordinance to print.
Thank you, Director Calderon. We will open the public hearing at seven fifty-nine. If you have any comments, please come forward.
Good evening. Denise Marchand, one one four, Sandra Court in Porterville, and Mayor and City Councilman. I respectfully want to voice my concern and opposition to this amendment. I believe that it too drastically reduces the regulations and requirements that have for years set the standards in the community, standards to develop and maintain an aesthetically pleasing community. I have for, I believe, most of my adult life, worked for the betterment of this community. In my career capacities, I was a project manager with Main Street, and then for twenty-one years, worked in the Community Development Department of this city, the city that I love. love and work so hard on. And as you can imagine, in that capacity, I dealt with these sign, the sign ordinance many times. I was one of the main administrators of the design guidelines and developed those when we had redevelopment. The sign ordinances are always controversial. I've been on many committees and worked through many of them, but it always boiled down that we saw the need for them and the need for control. And I am proud of this community. I want to continue being proud of this community. I wanted to let you know every fall and spring, I bring high school students from my Z Club to the downtown area, and we do a cleanup. And before we start that cleanup, I give them a sort of a little lecture and talk about, to them about having worked for the city of Porterville and what it meant, because so much of our work was in economic development, so much of your work should be in economic development, and what it means to be proud of the community. And part of that pride is seeing a clean community, an aesthetically beautiful community. And I hope that I instill in them this sense of pride and pride that all of us should have in it. And I believe that is something that we need to control and that we need to control with a little bit stricter sign ordinance. And I am very concerned about the action that you're looking to take tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marchand. Is there anyone else with comments? I'm not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing at 8:02, bring it back to the council. Does council have any questions for staff or statements they'd like to make? Councilman Beltran?
I'll make it brief. Kind of similar to any projects that come before, so you know, there's a balance between, you know, what's worked in the past and, and, you know, obviously, the council have some new visions for the community, as we saw with the, the last action taken with, you know, for growth and addressing some issues that may come along with that. This is one that kind of walks that fine line as the comments were made by Ms. Marchand. I think we're going to have to come back and address, add things back into this. I know it's kind of gutting a lot of it, but from what I see, for the most part, it's almost, almost double language. Some things may have been a little more too restrictive. And we'll see, I guess, it's one of those things that when we see it, we'll notice it, that if it's something that this council or the community starts to say, we went a little too far, just as simply as we're removing this, we can come back and simply add an amendment and add it back in. So again, kind of maybe like the water conservation, you know, we kind of had a restriction to kind of educate and, and let the community learn why we're doing this. And then as we kind of let that restriction out, the community kind of was good stewards of the water. And so I'm, I'm hoping the same comes of this sign ordinance change. I feel like we will address stuff in the future, but for now, let's, hopefully, individuals will act respectfully and not kind of go crazy with some of the deregulation that we're doing. So I want to trust and respect the, the property owners and businesses in the community and that they're good stewards. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Green, do you have any comments?
No, just I agree with Mr. Beltran. There's been a lot of confusion with the sign ordinances. People don't, one person gets, gets, gets a citation, the other person has the same thing, and they, they get overlooked. So hopefully, this will clear up a lot of the confusion. And as, if things don't work out that well, we can always amend at a later date.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Councilman Rivas?
Yes, thank you very much for your statement, Denise, and I appreciate that. But like Mr. Councilman Green and Mr. Councilman Beltran echoed, I echoed their sentiments. And, you know, nothing is permanent in stone. This is just a deregulation of a lot of things that have been going on, and, you know, we need to give our stakeholders and the businesses the trust to, to do the right thing. So, but with, in, in the event that it gets out of hand, or it gets too, too monotonous, we will address it, and we will bring it back to the council. And if we have to do an amendment with other things, we will. So with that, I think a big, it's a big trust issue, and I, I look forward to making some, this change go into effect. And if not, then we will address it when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Yeah, thank you. I thought those are great comments, by the way. Thank you, Denise, for all of your tenure and all the hard work that you have contributed to this over the years. And, you know, one of the comments that I really like about what you, what you're talking about here is that we want to keep our city clean. And since this council was seated, we have been working around the clock to get our city back in order, because it's been out of order for a while. And getting the, the streets clean and those things are really important, because if it's clean, it stays clean. If it's dirty, it gets dirtier. I understand that thought process, and we appreciate the time that, that a lot of people devote to keeping our city clean, and it's getting cleaner as we go. It's not just the new council, but we've all decided to focus on this. And I think that I would make some counterarguments. While I understand your sentiment and I understand the need for control, a lot of the control in our city was an illusion. We were doing selective enforcement for years and years, trying to keep up with too much red tape. And it wasn't being applied effectively or equally across all of the city. And so the issue was the amount of resources it was taking to keep those policies in place and, and handle them effectively became unmanageable. And it wasn't because anybody was trying to be selective enforcement, it just became the way that we did business. So streamlining this, and to Councilman Beltran's point, most of this is just removing redundancy. And so a lot of the streamlining is just a lot of the, the language that had been added over the years, even since your tenure. And I think that I, I understand your sentiment, and we want to main control, maintain some control on the aesthetics of, especially of our downtown area, because that, we want that to be a destination. But we have to just, you know, take stock of where we are, and I think this is a good position to deregulate. And like we did with the water is a good example. We, we pulled back, we got a good result. It's good for operations, it's good for the people. We're hoping to get the same result here, and we'll modify it if we don't. So we appreciate it if you could continue to, to give us feedback. And as we get feedback from the public as we go forward with this, I believe we're all going to, to vote for this tonight, because it's deregulation, and we want to give the power back to the people and trust the people and build trust.
Man, that was beautifully stated, Vice Mayor. I should have made you go first, so I didn't have to follow you. So it, it's just a great point. You know, we, we live in the most regulated state in the Union. We don't need to live in the most regulated city in the state. And so we're taking this approach. Yes, we may have to amend the, the series, the ordinance series, but that's okay. In the future, councils can adjust to the harm that this may cause. But ultimately, I think the majority of us on this council campaigned on deregulating. And so just like the water talk to this sign, or the ordinance we just amended tonight to get a project through, we want to do everything we can to be business-friendly. We are restoring customer service in the city of Porterville. That is our goal. I want to thank staff for their hard work on this. You've dived in. Jeff, I know you, as a consultant, also had a bite at the apple as well, so great work on this. Thank you. Director Calderon, thank you for the work you did on the sign ordinance. And City Manager, Mr. Tree, thank you as well. Your leadership helped us get through this and get to a point where we have deregulated, and, and we're going to allow businesses to put up a little more signage in the way they feel best suit for their business, while still providing health and safety. And, and we will adjust accordingly if the ordinance is adopted tonight in the future. With that, I would make a motion, if there's no other comments, I'd make a motion to go with staff recommendations.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Call for the vote. Passes 5-0.
Read by title only, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Porterville amending Series 300 of the Porterville Development Ordinance regarding signs.
Okay. Moving on to our last public hearing for that, the night, and that's the adoption of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, consistent with the city charter, the interim City Manager has submitted for the council's consideration the proposed budget for 2526 fiscal year. Included in the proposed 2526 budget is the City Manager's Budget Message, which outlines significant projects, operational priorities, and financial factors shaping the proposed budget. The message emphasizes importance for maintaining fiscal discipline, aligning resources with City Council priorities, and reviewing budgetary targets throughout the fiscal year to make adjustments if necessary. All spending authority from the continued fiscal year of 2425 budget will expire at the end of this month on September 30th, 2025. Adoption of the new budget is required to ensure payroll obligations are met and routine expenditures may continue to be incurred effective October 1 of 2025. On September 2 of this year, the proposed draft budget was presented to the City Council for review. Based on council input and updated information, staff has made several refine, refinements in preparing the final budget now, before the City Council for adoption. These include updated labor cost projections to reflect recently ratified agreements, adjustments to the capital improvement program to ensure full funding for the community center park, a community center and park, and the Fire Station 72 remodel, and one-year funding allocation for the Armory Emergency Center, and the addition of two water utility worker, two positions to support water meter replacement project. These updates strengthen the proposed budget by addressing labor obligations, advancing priority, community, and public safety facilities, supporting emergency shelter operations, and bolstering utility staffing to meet infrastructure demands. It is staff's recommendation that the City Council conduct the public hearing and consider for adoption the proposed 2025, 2026 fiscal year budget, including any modifications. That's the conclusion of staff's report, and happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, City Manager Tree. Bringing it, or excuse me, what we'll do is we will open the public hearing at 8:13. You could come forward at this time if you have any questions on the budget.
All the things you mentioned that you want to spend money on in the newspaper article, how many of those things are line items on the budget? Be transparent.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Neely. Is there any other comments? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing at 8:13. Mr. Tree, can you address the line item question? It's definitely there in the budget.
Yeah, with the attachments, we do want to recognize, outside of the City Manager's budget, budget message, we've provided the general fund budget, the draft resolution for the various budgets. This year, we bolstered the fund summaries by showing year-over-year changes, so you could see exactly where, where changes are made. In the capital improvement program, through study sessions, we, we went line by line. At the, the council's request, and priorities were identified in the capital improvement If there's specific questions regarding, I'd be happy to answer, but.
No, I, I just, I'm just pointing out the fact that it is a line item budget, and we have been very transparent with the way this budget has been built. I would argue the most transparent council that putting out a budget, we've done two budget studies to get to the point of building this budget, and so we've laid everything out. People know about the deficits with the city. We're not hiding anything, and so I just wanted to put that out there. With that, I'd bring it back to the council. Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
No, for the most part, it's kind of standard and practice, what we're doing in this budget compared to the past budgets. The only thing I would kind of address is, you know, as to your comments, Mayor, you know, we did two pretty heavy study sessions about our budget, and this budget still has not addressed those, what's called structural issues. But pretty much, that's the standard practice. Everything looks pretty well. The one thing I'll highlight is, as we asked departments to see where they could cut, I think it's like 5%, you know, to help, that the legislative body, which is ourselves, doubled our community, uh, community money from 250 roughly thousand to just over half a million.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Rivas, do you have any comments?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Councilman Green?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to bring up a point about the Barn Theater. The building in Porterville, it's, it's one of our most historic buildings and landmarks, and it, it's kind of, it's a community institution. And right now, the Barn Theater has some issues. It, it's been neglected apparently for a good number of years. The roof has issues, and the sewage system has issues. And I'd like to see if, if, bring it to the council's consideration to try to find some money or budget some money to help repair the Barn Theater. I think as walking, because the City Manager and I, a week ago Monday, walked around that thing ourselves, and you don't realize what shape it's in until you get up close to it. It needs a facelift, and it needs some help. And I'd wonder, Mr. Management, City Manager, you have anything you could add for me there?
Well, I appreciate the, the comments. The Barn Theater building itself is, it is a historic building for this community. It does need some repairs. The current tenant has, has voiced concern with having the financial capacity to do many of the repairs. In this schedule item for the grant program, they did request assistance from, from that program to help them out with many of the repairs. But to, to your point, the roof, the sewer, and many other items, it's, it's a long list. I believe their, you know, their total request for the cannabis grant, community grant program was around 100,000. So there's, there's a huge need there. I would agree.
I, just for a little more clarification on the, the contract between the city and the Barn Theater, is it the responsibility for the city to do those upgrades, or for the residents of the Barn Theater?
Yeah, the, the tenant of, of the building is required to maintain it. Make the repairs.
I would be open to the conversation. I know we, we have this budget fixed, but maybe there's opportunity in the future for some of the cannabis funds, maybe a heavier earmark, or possibly council's discretionary spending. I don't know if the full 100,000 that you're talking about is where we would land, but I'm open to the conversation in the future.
Sure. I, I do think, though, that one particular item that really needs attention rather quickly is the sewer problem, because they've left, somebody has opened the cleanout cap, and toilet paper and sewage is, is, when it backs up, it's coming out of the, they have to open that, or it won't, they're not, their toilets are getting plugged up and overflowing inside the theater. So somebody has removed the cap off the cleanout, that fitting, and we, when we walked around the side there, I mentioned that to you, Mr. City Manager, that looks, there's just toilet, toilet paper all around that. That, that's not really a good, it's a health hazard also.
Yeah, you're, you're, what you're pointing out is a health and safety issue, and if that's the case, they may need to close the restrooms and open up porter potties. So I, I just, when you put things out on record like this, it becomes very public.
We can have the city staff go out there and take a look, too.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll go out there and see what we can do to help them out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Something else I would, and it's kind of off to talk about, but talking about the Barn Theater, and, and, and of course, we want to, we want to help these folks. We want to see the Barn Theater thrive. You're right, it's a historical building, and it, it's part of the heritage and the culture of our community, so it's very important. I would love to see an expansion on what their program is, maybe start adding comedy, bringing something to the table. And then I would also love to see representing- bringing something to the table, and then I would also love to see representation from the Barn Theater community come and talk to us and, and talk about some of these needs, and so that the public knows what's going on, uh, with the Barn Theater exactly, that just my positioning on it, but I, I would think if they opened the doors for live comedy, it may drive people down to the Barn Theater and, and create more revenue for them. So just, just throwing out ideas as we're talking on this. Um, thank you for your input. Do you have any other comments?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Rivas, have I hit you yet?
Yeah, you already hit me.
Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor McCurby?
Well, I know a lot has been said on this, and, um, we've fought a lot and argued a lot, good teams fight, about where we go with, uh, the budget, and you know, a lot of people have changed this year. There's been a lot of gnashing of teeth this year. There's been a lot of misinformation this year. I know that when, uh, I was sworn in here, I was told for many months that the financial position of the city was excellent, no problem, we don't have any issues, and then after we spent several study sessions and we were very transparent, we found a number of issues that need to be addressed. This budget begins to address those things, and so I'm very proud to be able to come out and just say, look, there's a lot of comments that today about, you know, giving credit for the past council, I'd like to give them some credit. Um, I'd like to give them all the credit that they, that they deserve, because when you hide one point three million dollars a year for ten years straight, and you waste a lot of money in ARPA funds, and you grow the, the organization by a large percentage over a period of time when the economy was not growing, it creates problems, and we're seeing that. And so, we're going to have to pull back and tighten the belt going into this year, and we're doing that with this budget. And I think it takes really strong leadership from the folks that have been working so hard to, to identify those problems, ad- help us to address those problems, and then help us to figure out how to prioritize from here forward, because a lot of things, and a lot of people talk about the library, like the library, the idea that the public has about what we can do and, and, and what they want are miles apart. And I will, you know, give credit to the past council about the community center, for example, cause that started on the previous council, and we're delivering on that. And the way that we're able to deliver on that in this council is by draining most of measure I. We're going to put eight and a half million dollars of that money that could have gone somewhere else into that community center, and that's money that could have been spent somewhere else. We're going to talk more about that, but if you look at the budget, and you look at line by line, and you look at those humps and those big outliers like eight million dollars for community center, this is something that the city needs, but it's going to drain our resources to a point we're going to have to re-prioritize, and that's what this budget does. And you'll know from what we've done that this budget is safety and health forward, it's identity forward, we're fixing the infrastructure with the roads, we're fixing downtown, and we're keeping the health and safety and the cleanliness of our community as a highest priority, because we want to make sure that everybody can go to the park, can go downtown, and get around the city without having trouble like they were having over the past five years. And so that has been evident, everyone can see it, we've got a long ways to go yet, but we've made great progress, and that's this council's push. And it requires resources to do that, and we have taken what the people have told us, the people that elected us into these positions, and we've applied it that way so that we can make sure we get the most and deliver the most for our city. And we want to now focus internally on services and streamlining other things so that we can make it better, but the city is now barely balancing its budget and still has some deficits to Mr. Beltran's point, but those deficits were unknown until this council came in and said, let's look closer at the books. And so now, we're in a position where we can go forward, and I hope everybody that is an adult in the room can look at this and not be petty about it, but you know, let's, let's look forward, let's be optimistic, but let's be realistic as well, because we have to make sure that we deliver for all of the people in our city, and that's my comment.
Yeah, beautifully said, Vice Mayor. The Honorable Vice Mayor Ed McCurby, great job. So, uh, great points all the way across from all of you. Uh, the structural issues, even with measure H and measure I, we have to develop a plan for the future. It's needed, it's a necessity. Um, we've identified some of the issues. Um, while, while the budget has been set, we are still making historical, uh, improvements like the roads, um, investments into our roads. We're going to be putting three million dollars this year into self-performed street maintenance, which I have coined the term "public safety resurfacing," because we are twenty years behind on our roads. And that's the state of California, that's the county, but we have to start addressing these issues. Um, like the Vice Mayor had said, we, we're going to prioritize clean streets, clean parks, we're still going to continue to maintain and, and produce public safety at a high standard, and restore customer service, which is what government is about, and what it's here to do, is deliver customer service. We've fallen away from that, and so that's some of the change that we're being, but this, this budget supports that. I thank you once again to staff for all the hard work and hours put in this. This was a lot in the making to get to this point. Um, with that, I would, uh, make the motion to adopt the, uh, the budget put forth here and staff recommendations.
I will second that motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a first and a second. We'll call for the vote. We're just missing one vote, or two.
Am I showing up?
There we go. Okay, four and an abstain. Okay. With that, we'll move on to our first scheduled matter, City Manager.
Yeah, Mayor, just, just for your consideration and maybe the public, uh, typically at eight fifteen, eight thirty, just want to offer if the, if the council wants to take a, a five-minute recess.
Yes. Council, would, would you like to take a ten-minute recess?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Yeah? All right, let's, let's take a recess. We'll come back in ten minutes. Thank you.
For Sergeant Arms.
Go ahead and start business, and we'll start with the amended, the Department of the Armory. I'd like to do that first for Schedule Matters. Let's go ahead and knock that out.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item is authorization to approve an agreement with the United States Army for temporary use of the sports park. The United States Army has requested to enter into an agreement with the city of Porterville for the use of the sports park for training activities. The proposed agreement establishes a five-year term beginning September 17th and continuing through September 30th of 2030. During this period, the Army would be authorized to utilize the sports park, subject to terms and conditions of the agreement, which include liability provisions and demnification language to protect the city. While the Army's immediate request is to begin use of the facility tomorrow, the agreement provides for ongoing access for the next five years. This request was received today, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, which is after the posting of the agenda. Due to the Army's training schedule, consideration of this agreement is necessary at this time to allow for authorized use of the sports park. The city attorney has reviewed the agreement and recommends that the city council consider approval to ensure proper authorization is in place. It is staff's recommendation that the city council, one, approve the agreement with the United States Army for use of the sports park for a five-year term, beginning tomorrow, September 17th, 2025, through September 30th, 2030. And, two, authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and all related documents pending final approval from the city attorney. That's the conclusion of staff's report, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager Tree. Bringing it back to the council, is there any comments?
No comment, Your Honor.
The only comment I would have is just, we move forward with this, and I make a recommendation for, to pass it.
Okay, so we got a motion to accept staff recommendations and going forward with this. And I would, I'm gonna second that, but I would also just like to state for the record, these are our partners, they are training within our jurisdiction, and they also create wealth in our community as far as staying at the hotels in our city and shopping at our local vendors and restaurants. So, we love having the Armory here, training, the Army here, and training, and so I second that motion. Is there any other comments?
I'll just make a brief comment, and I don't know if this is a pretty standard, looking at our legal counsel, this is pretty standard one. The only thing I highlight at the very bottom was, it says soldiers openly carrying weapons, which obviously that's part of their kind of uniform and stuff, but I don't know if they carry any type of munitions with them for weight and what have you. That was the only question I had, is there any kind of live ammunition?
It could, I mean, I don't, they-
That's the only concern I had.
Yeah, so there is, there'll be a provision, there's also a provision in here, I do believe that, I mean, it's general, they don't, they don't get into it, which means that when that's the case, it's not narrow, so it could be construed broadly. That being said, I did look through this again while we were actually in the meeting, and under number five and number six, it does talk about, I was concerned about coordination, but there is some coordination in here, so that, that makes me feel a little bit better, just because they are going to give you thirty days, at least thirty days' notice with regard to training exercises they want to do. And you notice it does, it also includes, you know, parachuting, that's another part of it. So, there is, but if you look at that, it does say the specific training activities will be conducted pursuant to, will be discussed and agreed to between licenser and government. So there will be opportunities for coordination between the city and the military here, so I think we can address not only those kinds of things, but also, you know, when, how often, to make, you know, interruptions with city scheduled events, those kinds of things. So, I'm a little bit more reassured. It's not, you know, super explicit, but it does talk about the fact that there is that ability, and then on number six, there's a joint survey and inspection process for those training events.
That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, I just want to say thank you, Julia, for looking into that. We want to make sure that we have good coordination. And, you know, I just remind everybody, when you hit 911 and you call the police, guys with guns come. The Army has guns, and they protect our country, I trust them with weapons. We need to make sure we keep that under control, but I don't want to have any scare tactics and we're having the military in Porterville and-
I don't think they're gonna be operating grenade exercises out there.
It's a partnership for training.
They're training for, for what they may experience in combat, this is, it's a necessity, so with that, do you have a comment?
They always shoot bad guys.
With that, we have a first and a second, I'll call for a vote. Passes, five zero. Okay, moving on to Schedule Matter number twenty, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item is for consideration to participate in the Strathmore Public Utility District Preliminary Engineering Study Report. The city has received a request from Provost and Pritchard Consulting Group on behalf of Self-Help Enterprises and the State Water Resource Control Board to participate in a preliminary engineering report for the Strathmore Public Utility District. The study will look at wastewater treatment and disposal upgrades for Strathmore, the possible inclusion of Plainview, and whether a regional wastewater facility could be developed using Porterville's treatment plant. Participation would not obligate the city to accept consolidation or expand our service area, it would only allow for an elevation of whether, an evaluation of whether such alternatives are technically and financially feasible. At the end of the study, the city would still decide whether or not to move forward with any recommendations. The consultant has requested timely confirmation from the city. If we participate, staff will provide information and meet with the consultant, with a draft report expected in the coming months, and a final report towards the end of this calendar year. It is staff's recommendation that the city council provide direction, either, one, authorize staff to respond to this, that the city will participate for evaluation purposes only, without obligation, or, two, decline participation and notify the consultant of the city's position. That's the conclusion of staff's report, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tree. And bringing it back to council, I think this is a neat opportunity, and I, I remember Councilman, or former Councilman Shelton's comments earlier and the concerns on the future. Director Alvarez, with the comments on the Atkins well, are you familiar with what we ended up getting from the state on that well?
I do not have that information, no.
Okay, and I, is there any staff that may, Ms. Weaver? I like it, there we go, where's some confidence, I like it.
So, based on the public comment earlier, that is true, that they did try to reduce it down to basically half a well's worth of funding, so we did have to negotiate further and include other areas along with that assessment to basically guarantee payment of the full well, and that included the Central Mutual water area and the Beverly Grandwater area, to help increase those fundings to cover the full amount. So, the statements earlier were correct, but we did eventually get there with the funding.
But with that, we had to take on more than what they originally-
Right, the issue was, is wells came back better than expected, and so then the state turned around and said, oh, well, those wells now are doing better, so now you don't really need this one, I mean, that was basically what they did.
Correct.
So, it is a little bit of a different situation, because here we're talking about a wastewater treatment facility, but I totally understand former Councilmember Shelton's concerns, because-
Yeah, what he was pointing out is the state is dangling a carrot.
Right.
And then if we take that carrot, they may not stick up to the original deal, so-
I think, I think it's more like Lucy and the football with Charlie Brown.
Yes, so I, at the same time, I look at the division on this, and the opportunity for, if there is a future tree tree plant, and the state is willing to work with us, and if we were to take on Strathmore's sewage, and they are willing to fund that, and then because, the simple fact is, the capacity of our sewage plant cannot take on Strathmore. It's just too much, it's, the length, it will hurt our infrastructure and our ability to build homes in Porterville, and build businesses in Porterville, and take care of the constituents of Porterville, and so it'd be overreaching to, to take that on without some change in the way we do sewage in the city of Porterville. At the same time, I also think of the issues out towards Terabella, Vice Mayor and myself were talking about this yesterday, and you have a community that's really upset with Seton Farms, and the, we already have infrastructure going out to Hope School at Teapot Dome, and we do have a, a unique opportunity as far as the old rail road tracks, the Santa Fei rails, being able to utilize those right-of-ways to put in infrastructure at a possibly cheaper rate than ripping up road in other areas. So, there is potential for business or a partnership here, it's just, I think we have to be very strategic in going forward. I'll hand it off to the council from here, Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
So, the report also addressed, that they were asked to do, also addressed Plainview.
Yes.
And, kind of back, piggybacking to your comments about Terabella, if you take in the distance from Plainview and then Strathmore and then to the city of Porterville, it's very similar to the distance to Terabella. So to me, this might look, and I think my Monday meeting with, with City Manager Tree, was kind of addressing a more regional aspect of, if the state believes in their mandates, and the state believes that, you know, trying to help the communities, I think, you know, Seton is a great idea as far as a private sector funding, because they have a massive amount of water that goes to that processing plant, that they've got to figure out what to do with, they've hit some environmental issues. But, so, kind of this fork in the road, it's either a yes or a no, you know, I don't want it, same to your comments, I don't want to take on somebody else's burden without some guarantees, but it's the Lucy and the football situation, is if we can't get, you know, some federal funding, some state funding, some private funding, you're just trying to, we're trying to open up this umbrella even bigger, this isn't something that necessarily the city of Porterville or the residents can facilitate. There's a little bit of two, two kind of problems here, not problems, this directly addresses wastewater. The tertiary plant is kind of a different animal, that's, that's the water itself, but again, if the state wants to heavily mandate environmental, you know, concerns, this is kind of putting their money where their mouth is, is, okay, we'll help us try and fund this. So, I would go along with, with staff rec, or, number one, which is authorizing staff to write a formal written response of maybe looking into the idea of a regional partnership with the county, and taking in Plainview, Strathmore, and, and I'm not sure how much they're highlighted as far as Terabella's area, and privately with Seton Farms. It'd be interesting to talk with their directors, where that, you know, their business practices for future growth or their environmental issues. So that would be kind of my overall, is not a commitment to anything yet, but just talk regionally to see how many partners we can get on board to support this financially.
So, with what you're talking about there, you're adding or amending that recommendation to include Terabella?
Yeah, 'cause, again-
In the conversation?
Yeah, 'cause I don't believe Strathmore and even Plainview for that matter would have enough funding with, even with the state supporting it.
Can I, if you guys want a little bit of backstory on this, since I'm, I represent Strathmore, so, and, and I don't have a dog in this fight, by the way, if and when there's ever a decision that there's going to be a joint project, I'll be conflicted out, so right now it's just about feasibility, and really, it's really, really at this point, so Provost and Pritchard has been working on this feasibility study for quite some time, and had not heard yet from, officially from Porterville. So, I do know there's a draft already done, although there, it's gonna need to be, I understand that there's probably gonna be new drafts needed, so it's not completely too late for Porterville to be considered if it wants in the feasibility study. It is just a feasibility study at this point, however, there is, there is already a project for Strathmore and Plainview, so those two, so there is, it's through the state and self-help, administered through self-help, to address some issues that Strathmore has with its plant, and there's a desire by the state to have Plainview community connected to sewer for a variety of reasons, and so I think those two are gonna, and so the question then becomes, while we're doing this, the state is saying, should we consider regional? Doesn't mean you can't ask, and you certainly could try to ask to see if you can have other communities that aren't, haven't been in the conversation thus far, but I don't know whether or not, just given the timing of everything, how, whether that will be feasible, just because I know that they're under the gun to get their study done as it is. So I do know that Lindsay was, was part of that, was also, they asked us that Provost and Pritchard also consider the feasibility of that, I can tell you that Strathmore has not been super excited about that idea, they feel like if there was going to be a regional plan, it would make more sense for it to be, you know, done with Porterville, so, but I think that, I think that's, you guys are hitting the nail on the head as far as, is it worth at least considering a regional solution while there's interest from the state in dealing with this, and maybe you see how far that interest is willing to go.
No, it's, it's a great point, and we want to reduce the nitrates in our ground, right, and, and there's opportunity to, to partner on a level that may not be thought of yet, but, so what you're saying is, we need to just stick with what's here, don't add the Terabella?
You could ask, I just don't know if, I don't know whether they'll be willing, I just don't know enough about the dynamics going on in the state of California and this project to know whether or not they'll be willing to add that, given that they're under constraints to get them, get this feasibility study done.
I would imagine they're under, so who's, who's looking at Terabella's situation?
I don't know if, I-
It's not, they're not under the same mandate?
I haven't seen this, yeah.
They're not identified in a report that they are any kind of moratorium of building or problems, so-
Okay, gotcha. Councilman Rivas, I know you want to get a bite at the apple.
No, I don't want to get a bite at the apple, I just need some clarification, because this is, I mean, so many muttered the whole concept, is this just a study, or are we going into a regional agreement with Terabella, or what? What the heck is going on?
So, before, so what's required, I know, it's complicated, what's, what's required-
It's really not complicated, it's just, is it a study, or is it-
Study, this is just a feasibility study, whether or not you want to participate in the feasibility study.
That's plain and simple, thank you, black and white, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor McCreary.
I'd like to make a motion that we add Terabella as a condition, a condition. We'll join if we add Terabella, so it's a wider study, otherwise, we're not interested.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. We have a motion on the table. I actually like that motion, so I will second it. Is there any other conversation?
Does that address the timeframe of this, of this response? That's the only question I have.
They, I think that they are pushing to get their final feasibility study done by the end of the year. Now, it takes a long, these things apparently take a lot of time, so I don't know what that actually means, but that's the motion, and that's what will be conveyed, and if it can happen, it can happen, if it can't, it can't.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any other conversation? We'll call for the vote. We have four and one, or excuse me, yes, four and one abstain. Okay, moving on to Schedule Matter Number 21. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this item is regarding the Community Benefit Cannabis Program Grant, and I've asked Director Calderon to provide staff report.
Thank you. On March 18, 2025, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 25-2025, establishing the Community Benefit Nonprofit Program, Nonprofit Grant Program, and the Community Benefit Small Business Grant Program, to provide financial support to Porterville-based organizations and businesses that contribute to community prosperity, economic resilience, and quality of life. The purpose of the funding is to strengthen local entrepreneurship, support essential community services, and promote cultural and recreational opportunities for Porterville residents. On August 26, 2025, the Cannabis Committee reviewed the submitted applications and recommended the following awards, up to 25, I mean, up to $5,000, based on application requests. So, for the small businesses, it was a first-come, first-served basis, first completed, so we received more, we received 14 applications, but there was enough funding only for the following. Glow Club Pilates and Wellness, Julia's Beauty Bar, California Tutoring Company, Eddie's Doghouse Grooming, El Nuevo Mahicali, and Back to Balance Carapractic. Small business grants were determined based on the available funding, the date completed applications were received consistent with the program guidelines approved by the City Council. For nonprofit grant recipients, it was Central California Family Crisis Center, Imagine Community Arts Center, Boring Theater, Valley Oaks Community Church, Sierra View Foundation, Tulip River Parkway Association, and Valley Dual Day Services. There was also a total of 11 applications received, however, only seven were completed. And there was, it didn't need to be a lottery of any kind, just because it was not fully committed to the funding that we had available. So, there's remaining funding there. In addition, the recommending, to recommending the awards, the Cannabis Committee also recommended the following program modifications for the City Council to approve or consider approving, to add an eligibility period, so this would expand the benefit of the program to more applicants. Small businesses would be ineligible for three years following receipt of the award, and nonprofit organizations would be ineligible for two years unless they only applied for half the grant totaling the 5,000 over two-year period. Program Cycle Award would also standardize both small business and nonprofit applications to an annual three-month acceptance window, eliminating confusion, confusion and reducing administrative burden. And this is because one of them was a year-round acceptance, and the unknown was a window, so that would standardize both of them. And the third one was to change the grant agreement language, to require the documentation of the fund used be submitted within 90 days of the award. Previously, there wasn't that recommendation. And failure to provide the required documentation would result in repayment of the grant awarded, and also would make them ineligible for future funding. So, the recommendation before City Council is to approve the award of the Community Benefits Small Business and the Nonprofit Grant Program funds as recommended by the Cannabis Committee, and adopt the recommended program modifications regarding eligibility periods, standardized award cycles, and grant agreement documentation requirements. And I see some of the businesses are in attendance as well.
Thank you, Director Calderon. Bringing it back to the council, Vice Mayor McMurphy, Councilman Beltran, you guys sit on the Cannabis Committee. Do you have any comments or want to start?
I'll go first, Vice Mayor. No, I hope we did well by the community of what we're trying to do here, is spread enough to everybody who would qualify. And I want to just congratulate or thank staff, because especially on the nonprofit side, they don't always have the personnel that deals with their tax forms, or their invoices and what have you, and so it was kind of difficult for some of them to qualify, or especially by the deadline. So, I just appreciate staff's effort in helping them. And as this, you know, continues in the future, hopefully, we'll get more applicants, and they're all done in a timely manner. The only little concern that I have after all of this was, we didn't utilize all the funding for the nonprofit side. There was approximately $31,635 left over, that the Cannabis Committee's recommendation was to roll that over for next year. We're anticipating a lot more people applying, since about half of them didn't get their paperwork done on time. And unfortunately, I believe last council meeting, that money was diverted to the reunification program. And so, it was a little disheartening that the whole amount was removed and used for something that wasn't a recommendation as of yet. And just highlighting a little bit that the reunification program isn't operational as of yet. So, I just, I was a little disappointed that the whole fund was utilized, but that's kind of water under the bridge for now, but that was just a little hiccup that I thought it would have been nice to discuss. But other than that, I really appreciate all staff's effort, and Vice Mayor for helping clean up the language on this for the future applicants.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran, Vice Mayor McMurphy.
Yeah, well said. Thank you very much, Councilman Beltran. We have a good-spirited committee. We disagree on a lot of things, but we get a lot of good things done. Thank you for all the support Claudia and staff, putting this together. You know, there's going to be things here that people don't like, but I think it came out pretty well. And it's interesting also, maybe as an afterthought too, Councilman Beltran, that it is a tough budget year. There is a real need for this reunification, so it goes towards helping people in the homeless problem, and we do have the surplus funds here, so there'll be more funds available next year. So, I'm not, you know, excited about that, but I think it's actually a prudent way to use those funds. So, just to make that comment, but I thought that came out pretty well. You know, I look at these and I say, which one's a small business? Is anybody abusing this? And it came out pretty well this time around. I don't know how big the Sierra View Foundation is, and, you know, they took a little bit less, or what that was about, but without auditing all of these things, it looks like it came out pretty well. And we're helping the small business and the entrepreneurs that produce jobs in our city, and as well as a nonprofit. So, I just wanted to comment on that and add that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McMurphy. Councilman Rivas?
Thank you very much for your guys' handling on all this, but I'm just going to say a few words, and real simple, I just take staff recommendations, one and two, and I make a motion for that.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. City Manager Tree, do you have comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did want to provide a comment regarding the family reunification. I met with Chief Costello today, and we've been trying to, I wanted to understand the history of the family reunification program. It's a concept that actually had started a long time ago, and it was, at that time, the direction was to utilize the funding that was coming off the top towards the police department. That funny, that money has not directly been allocated for the family reunification program at this time, but that was the original intent, was to create this program utilizing the money off the top. And so, those funds are still available to be used. And so, that, as we were putting the final touches on the budget and getting a better understanding of the historical context, I think there's an opportunity for those funds, for the nonprofits to remain, and utilize the funding that was originally intended to, to support, you know, PD in those efforts, and partnering with a nonprofit for, you know, all of the aspects and the details of the family reunification. And Chief Costello could provide some additional context, some clarity on this topic.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. Yeah, one of the discussions we had, and I think it was in December of last year, shortly after some of the council was seated, we started looking and researching that with our homeless team, with SMART, and how do we take those next steps to assist families to get back to where they could be cared for, or where that we could get them help? And one of the plans was, with some of the cannabis money, was to go towards education within our schools and assist our school resource officers, but also to start the reunification program, and have the police department and SMART assist that, along with nonprofits, but have the PD attempt to develop that program. And it's just getting the process with finance straightened out, and how we do that, so it's tracked, it's audited, and how those funds are dispersed, and how we do that. So, I think that's the step that we're at. I know Julie was in that meeting, because I had some current concerns about gifts of public funds, and how we do that, and those concerns were alleviated. So, I think that if we can move forward, I think the PD would assist, and assist the nonprofits, along with the city, taking proactive steps in doing that too. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. No, it's great to hear the history and what we've been working on in the past. It may have felt like it came out of nowhere, but this was the plan all along, and the, those funds were left over, and so, I'm glad that we're able to utilize it in this way, and still using these funds in the nonprofit zone. So, it's good. Councilman Green, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, I have no comments as well. Great work to the Cannabis Committee and staff. I'll second Councilman Rivas's motion. If there's no other comments, we'll call for the vote. Just, there we go. Passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to Schedule Matter Number 22. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the, Mayor, council, I've asked actually our city clerk to provide the staff report.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the City Council appointed Richard Tree to the position of interim City Manager effective May 24, 2025. The City Council has now concluded its interviews for a permanent City Manager as of September 10, 2025, and directed the mayor on the City Council's behalf to offer Mr. Tree the permanent position based on the prior permanent City Manager contract terms. Given the party's desire to work expediently to get the contract in place, this office was directed to bring the attached agreement for consideration by the City Council, addressing compensation and terms and conditions of employment if Mr. Tree was substantially in agreement with the offer. As directed by the City Council, the term of the proposed agreement runs for two years and sets compensation at the amount set in the former City Manager's contract, at $180,000 annually, $15,000 per month. It also contains the same terms and conditions as were established in the last multi-year City Manager contract, as the others were developed for a limited term or interim position. Therefore, it provides for a 2% annual increase commencing January 1, 2026, and allows for performance-based annual discretionary increases not to exceed 5%, approved by the City Council after written annual evaluation. The benefits specified track with prior agreements, vehicle allowance, phone stipend, laptop, computer, with some minor changes. The 12-month severance provision originally specified in the prior agreement has been clarified to only be allowed if there is an involuntary separation without cause, and is shortened to the amount of months remaining on the term of the contract of less than 12 months. If approved, it is requested that the City Council schedule a ceremonial swearing-in for the next regular City Council meeting. Staff's recommendation is that the City Council consider the formal appointment of Richard Tree as City Manager, and the approval of the employment agreement between the city of Porterville and Richard Tree, and if approved, schedule a ceremonial swearing-in for the next regular City Council meeting on October 7, 2025. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Fernando. Okay, is there any comments? Vice Mayor McMurphy?
You want me to go first?
Oh, yeah.
Well, look, I think it's been a long time coming. It's been a challenging year going through all the budget, and I'm really excited to see how much we've been able to get done with the staff, and with Richard's leadership, and narrowing down the issues, and getting us a budget tonight. And so, it's great to see him, a final position here, where we're going to select someone who has skin in the game, that understands the challenges, probably as intimately as anyone can, and ready to go to work, even offering to save some of this nonprofit money here at the last minute. So, I'm just really excited that we reached this point, and now it looks like we'll have a budget, and we'll have a City Manager, and we will start moving forward with all of the things that we want to get accomplished. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McMurphy. Councilman Rivas?
Congratulations, Mr. Tree. Well-deserved. I look forward to working with you in the next three years, because I really don't know what the next, after that's going to happen. But, in any event, I look forward to your leadership, your partnership, your understanding of things, and as I go on more, I get to know you, and I get to trust you more, because with me, it's about trust. And I think the city got themselves a really good man for the job, and just shine, just shine for the city, and take care of the city the way I believe you can do. And so, with that, I appreciate you, and I'm going to turn that back over to you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Rivas, Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
Yeah, this was a really interesting process, as we were kind of handed some individuals, and early on, and at least in my tenure, of people that had been around the city, and kind of, you know, was kind of all these fingers in the same glove. So, we're in a new chapter here, and it was really interesting. I kind of knew going into this that, you know, city managers, people that qualify for that, or have that experience, is very rare, especially coming to a smaller town. And so, you know, we were pretty optimistic and hoping, you know, a lot of people would apply. Initially, we had, we did have, I want to say in the upper 20s of applicants, and that got whittled down to five to interview, and then that got even whittled down to more, just to three. And, you know, we had some great discussions in close session, some great questions for the interviewees, and the selection ended up being Mr. Tree. And I go back to my experience as a council member, and being pretty green to an experience, and thinking, I could take this on, and being confident in my abilities and learning the process. And I think that's what we're going to, we're kind of going through right now, and so, just welcome Mr. Tree. And I know, in myself, I know what I'm capable of, and what I, you know, the mistakes I may make, and I hope that I'm given grace by others, and just look forward to what this next chapter is, because I know, unfortunately, there was kind of this, kind of feeling handcuffed at making moves, and whether it's personnel or strategies, and so now, you've got the keys, and so, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Green, do you have any comments?
Mr. Tree, my heartfelt and sincere congratulations to you. I have the utmost confidence in your abilities. I am so, I'm pleased that you're sitting there. I'm looking forward to working with you for the next couple of years, and maybe beyond. Rich, thank you very much. Glad you're on board, full-time.
Well, thank you, Councilman Green. And for myself, you know, there's some change that has come with our new City Manager, no longer Acting City Manager, but tonight with this approval, you are the City Manager for the next two years. And that was negotiated through our contract. But also, you know, and just stating for the record, you're coming in at a $180,000 pay level, and which $15,000 a month, which is $20,000 less than City Manager lawless, but also $40,000 less than what was being advertised originally in the beginning. And so, we appreciate you coming in and working at that level as well, and showing the downward pressure that we're pushing on the city. pressure that we're pushing on the city as a council. Something that I really appreciate about what you did in the beginning is transparency. We went through two buddy study sessions, budget study sessions, where we really got to understand how the budget works, looked at Measure I, looked at Measure H. We have identified some issues, and you're willing to go to work on them. Another thing that I greatly appreciate is that you do not treat this council as a ceremonial council, you treat us as electeds. And that means a lot, I think, to all of us. I think I speak for all of us when it comes to that, because we no longer want to live in a time where it's the administrative state and the administrative rule. We want the electeds to be able to have say in how we do business in Porterville. So with that, I would ask on you, and as we're going forward, and I make this motion, continue to reduce, help us reduce regulation, continue to help us build roads and clean up the trash in our streets, continue to help us address the homeless crisis here in Porterville, and continue to produce customer service at a level we haven't seen in decades. So congratulations, and I make the first motion to accept staff recommendations with going forward with Mr. Tree.
I will second that. Thank you, Mr. Rivas.
Okay, we have a first and a second. If there's no other comments, we'll call for the vote. Passes four, one abstain. Moving on to twelve thirty-four reports. This is a time for all twelve thirty-four reports required pursuant to Government Code, Cannabis Committee. Vice Mayor McCurvy. Oh, that was carried over, so, or no, that was carried over from, yeah, so.
It was, but you know, I don't mind commenting on it. We had a great session. You know, when I first joined that committee, I thought we were going to sunset that committee, and turns out we had a bunch of work to do. So we actually, I've enjoyed the, I think, three sessions we've had this year. Councilman Beltran and I have had some great discussions with our staff and with some input from the public. You see tonight the output from that committee. We think we have something that's pretty good, pretty decent for the public and serving the public from the initial creation of all of this. We're also working on some changes, of course, in the ordinances and the agreements as those businesses continue to mature. I think I would say mostly positive stuff coming out of there. There might be some more changes in front of us. Was there any highlights? Did I miss any highlights?
I think the only thing to highlight potentially was just a little bit of change in the agreements of what's going to be allowed, and that was the cultivation, I don't know if it was necessarily manufacturing, but packaging.
Something like that.
I think it was, so I would say internally it's a little more minor. I would highlight just one issue that I brought up with my concern at least, and I don't think it was necessarily any kind of disagreement, just going forward as this comes before City Council was, for me, was the cultivation side of it, was I need to do some more studying, and this discussion will continue, is the air. I'm concerned with the buffer zone with the schools, and so I don't know if there's some type of registers or whatever they'd call them, dampers or something in the exhaust systems, because as we all know, cannabis is very potent smelling, and so I'd really hate for that to create an environmental issue with the school next door. But there's a lot of technology out there, and for the most part, you know, I disagree with some of the stuff, but as I told, talked about in the committee and with the business owners, although I may disagree with some of the stuff, I'm not against stuff, and I want to work with them if that's the direction we're going. And so I think it was very positive interactions, and we had made great success. But that was the only, as far as my perspective was a highlight.
Okay, thank you for that report. Downtown Porterville Committee was carried over from August twenty-sixth. Do you have any?
Well, I'd like to give Stan an opportunity to weigh in. Stan, you want to say anything on the downtown committee?
Well, Ed, I think I've slept since then, because I can't remember.
Well, I'll take it, no problem.
I'll turn it over to you, because I wasn't prepared.
If I miss something, and I trigger something, you fill me in. All right, so we're making great progress on the downtown committee. Now, we initially, one of the things I want to emphasize here is when we made the selections for the downtown committee, we narrowed the focus to be business owners and people that had skin in the game, and we got a great team. You guys, I would encourage everyone to go watch that video, a lot of good interaction, a lot of candid conversations about what we want to do with downtown. We talked about the mission, talked about our vision, we talked about our values, family values, and we talked, we did a brainstorming session in the last downtown committee to try to reimagine. Instead of going from what other committees have done or what's been done in the past, we just said, let's start over, and let's put everything on the table and what we'd like, what we would desire to see in our downtown. And it was a great session. It was about an hour long, and it was very participative and it's very upbeat, optimistic. And so we end up going into some maps, we're starting to look at maps and scope. When we get into the next meeting, we're going to start talking about goal setting. And so the idea that I want to convey to the public is, we have a Chamber of Commerce, we've got other businesses that have skin in the game downtown, we want to work with all of those organizations and anybody who wants to contribute, because we're always looking for people that are passionate about downtown. And, but we're going to, we're going to set the stage with the downtown committee that we have this year, and we are fielding now, to reimagine what that is. And then after we do the goal setting, then we'll figure out how we can get it done. And we want to use the existing resources that are out there, but we don't want to be tied down to just those resources. As we all know, the Chamber of Commerce doesn't represent all of the businesses. They do a pretty good job, but, you know, we got to make sure that we look at downtown in an objective way at first in this committee, and we did that in the last meeting, and we're going to do that again in the next few meetings as we do the goal setting and try to set the stage for what we'd like to accomplish downtown in Porterville.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? And I would say, I would recommend or endorse what the Vice Mayor said, go and watch the meeting, it was a great meeting, and it is on YouTube. Link, Councilman Beltran.
I was not in attendance, I was out of town, but Councilman Rivas may have.
I was not in attendance, also I had a funeral in the family, so I was pretty busy the whole week, so.
Ms. Caudill, were you in attendance? Is there anything to report on?
No, I was not.
Okay, all right. Eastern Tully Groundwater Sustainability Agency met September fourth. Councilman Green.
Meeting was convened by Mr. Dennis Townsend on, he's the chairman, September fourth at approximately two o'clock in the afternoon. All board members were present. Approval of August seventh meeting approved, and approval of ratification of, I'm sorry, minutes were approved, and approval of ratification of bills paid and bills to be paid. Report on the LSMA, which is acronym for Land Subsidance Management Area. Landowner Outreach on Well Compliance. There seem to be doing a pretty good job getting all those wells in compliance in this subsidence area. And then there's October second meeting will be a public hearing on groundwater extraction Next meeting will be October second at two PM in the Chamber Council's, Council Chambers here, City Hall.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Okay, Mighty One Ninety met September eighth. I wasn't able to attend, neither was the Vice Mayor. Ms. Caudill, do you have anything to report on?
Yes, I did attend. The meeting took place September eighth. After introductions, the meetings, the minutes were reviewed, sorry, end of the day. I've talked a lot this evening. They went over social media and marketing updates, going through analytics and which Facebook posts and Instagram posts have the most interactions. They highlighted those that had the most. They also talked about the website update. Last meeting, there was talk about updating the Mighty One Ninety map with the various categories such as points of interest and, you know, things to do around town and around the Mighty One Ninety route. And so those story maps were created by our GIS supervisor with feedback from the community and existing points around town. The committee also contributed to feedback on any new points that needed to be brought forth, so that's the, if even you guys have any recommendations for anything on there, then we can go ahead and have those be added. There are also updates on the Action Plan Subcommittee's that were formed to make sure that the items on the Action Plan move forward, and that includes the marketing, partnership and outreach, and as well as the funding and grants Subcommittee's. So there was more suggestions from the partners on who else to call to the table that were, they see some missing partnerships that could make this meeting more robust and move the initiative forward. There was also an overview of the funding that is available, and the committee was asked to bring back ideas on what they wanted to spend the funds on, including some of the suggestions during the meeting, including magazines specifically to Mighty One Ninety, some promotional items and renewal of the contract with the chamber to continue leading the committee and managing the social media, et cetera. So the upcoming events also were mentioned that are taking place around the Mighty One Ninety. One that took place already was the Business Showcase. There's the September twenty-seventh redo of block party and Tully River Parkway Biodiversity Day that also took place on the thirteenth, and there's the Concierge College happening in October. And then we provided some updates on the main street reconstruction and talked about the parking, alternative parking to accommodate the businesses downtown while that is happening, and just updating them on the events that are coming up for the city. And that's about it. Oh, and Ms. Kathy Capone also shared the five K walk slash run.
Thank you, Ms. Caudill. Okay, moving on to Tulare County Association of Governments, TCAG, myself and Councilman Rivas attended. We met September fifteen in the city of Woodlake at their community center. The TCAG Board approved a transportation consent calendar, which included important actions for the city of Porterville, specifically the Board approved the city's FY physical twenty-five, twenty-six state of good repair project in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, which will continue the transit center renovation project. The consent calendar also included the adoption of amendments to the Transportation Development Act, Claims Manual, updating procedures for member agencies when submitting transit funding claims. During the transportation action and discussion items, Caltrans reported several upcoming projects affecting Porterville and nearby areas. Highway One Ninety near Camp Nelson, roadwork will begin that will reduce the road to one lane. On Highway One Ninety near River Island, repair work on the bridge will be starting soon. Closer to the city, construction on the Westwood and Rockford roundabouts is expected to begin later this year. At the end of the conclusion of Caltrans monthly reports, I raised the issues of increased litter along Highway sixty-five and also the on-ramps and off-ramps of Henderson and Olive. And I'm glad to report Sean was, got back to me today via email and told me that he would have pictures of the highway and the on-ramps and off-ramps when they're cleaned up. So they're going and taking action on that, which we greatly appreciate Caltrans partnership. Sitting as the Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Authority, the Board approved the fourth-quarter report confirming that a total of one-hundred-and-ten-thousand was received countywide of that Porterville allocations was twenty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-three. Based on the program's formula, fifty percent population and fifty percent number of abatements, these funds help city address abandoned vehicles in our community. Under Measure R, sitting as a transportation authority, the Board approved Amendment Number Five to the Transit Bikes Environmental Mitigation Plan, reallocating sixteen million originally planned for the K Road to Exeter project. The funds were redistributed to the county, Visalia, Exeter and Farmersville, giving those agencies more flexibility to deliver priority projects. During the discussion, I advocated for funding to support improvements to Porterville-Tully River Parkway and highlighted the importance of regional active transportation corridor. And there was a remaining two million dollars in that sixteen million, and I was trying to get it towards that project, but ultimately they said they needed those funds for inflation reasons for some of the projects coming forward. Overall, the meeting reinforced the importance of regional coordination while ensuring that Porterville's transportation priorities remain supported and visible in countywide planning. Okay, with that, we'll move on to oral communication.
Brock Neely addressed on record. One thing that I'd like to see is on the cannabis grant program that you add fraternal organizations under the nonprofit. They're not a 501(c)(3), they're a different IRS category. So the Elks Lodge was not eligible to even apply, so that would help us with doing some work on our one-hundred-and-three-year-old building. The other thing is the comments that Mr. Green made on the selective enforcement on the signs. That's baked into the cake because you don't have a true code enforcement program. Everything is on response, it's not active. So when you only have people calling in violations, you're going to get selective enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Are there any other comments?
This quick, Denise Marchand, one for Sandra Court, and I was hoping Councilman Beltran would have put a plea in for this, but we have kicked off, as the Link Committee kicked off our annual coat and shoe and sleeping bag drive, and letters have gone out for the wish list of all the items that we're collecting, but we are having our drive-through, annual drive-through spaghetti dinner a week from Thursday on the twenty-fifth. I have tickets, I know Councilman Beltran has them, Christina Tank has them here. I'd love to see every person from the city going, driving through and getting their dinner and supporting this worthwhile cause. Our giveaway will be November twelfth at the Link Event, and we do have a Link Event tomorrow morning, and we invite everybody to come by and say hi. We've added a lot of services, we've been having some great turnouts, and a lot of good things are happening, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marchand. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else. We'll move on to other matters. Councilman Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. I know this was probably the second time, I think, in oral communication somebody brought up the Villa striping, and so just so the community members know, we're taking note of that. Sometimes these things are contracted out, so there's a waiting time, but I don't know if there can be something temporarily put, especially at the intersection portion, maybe not so much as the longer stretches, but maybe at the intersections. I drive in that area, I live in that area, so it can be a little distorted, especially in the evenings or in rush hour. A parent brought up the PC route buses, and, you know, I believe there've been direction and some movement in supplementing those routes, and so there's kind of discounted. Unfortunately, because there's that supply and demand issue, that's just a problem unfortunately that we have. You know, we can't necessarily just have a bunch of vehicles available for early morning or late afternoon, and so that's something I know the City Manager Tree specifically deals with transportation, and city staff is aware of it, will continue to work on that. But we are trying to supplement that, so it is a lower cost for those students. Want to highlight community event, September twentieth, this weekend, is the Rip Cookoff and Car Show at the Fairgrounds. It's from ten to four PM. Earlier, there was discussion about the development project that we approved over on Henderson, and that's still an undertaking. Just because we approved it doesn't mean they're going to break ground tomorrow. But just as an example, the gentleman talked about just the environmental impact report was roughly eight hundred pages. Our agenda we got the other day is seven-hundred-and-seventy-six pages, so just for an environment, that's how thick of a document that they have to produce, and it's many layers of it, and so that is very costly from all the, you know, professionals that got to look at it and the turn. at it and attorneys. But that is such an undertaking, and that is just the environmental. That has nothing to do with the rest of their, you know, architecture and landscaping and all the permitting and all that, that the city requires and what have you. But that's just a visual example of the undertaking. As the vice mayor wanted to highlight, it's, it's a lot for a private company to put into that type of project. And I'd love to see that it's a local resident that is doing this project. This isn't something that's coming from out of the air. These are, these are local individuals. Thank you, Mrs. Marshant, again, for highlighting the Link Dinner tickets. They're $15. And this is a great way. I, and thank you for highlighting, tomorrow's another Link event. You know, a lot of people kind of forget, you know, there's this every other week event on Wednesdays out at the navigation center that the city of Porterville supports for the homelessness, and that's the shelter, or the, kind of the residential shelter where they can stay, stay there. You know, there's medical stuff. There's mental health stuff. There's stuff as simple as, right now, there's a little issue with the pet care. We need to find somebody to take on that, that project. But, you know, vision and, and so many things that we do. And when people ask, how can they help? This is a little way to come and spend $15. You're going to get something back, and you're going to supplement some of these activities that we're doing. You know, when you ask, how can you help? This is a great way. Come to the city of Porterville Hall. They have tickets here available. Contact me through all the different avenues. Find me on social media or the city website or my phone number, and I will get you a ticket. This is a great event, middle of the week, Thursday. You don't want to cook? Come by and pick up a great dinner. Just briefly, thank you, Mrs. Capone, for the one Mighty 190 report. These are, again, some of these little projects that are happening. The website, I didn't even know myself. It's theMighty190.com. And on Instagram, it's Explore Mighty 190. You know, just to highlight again, for visitors to come to our community, utilize that thoroughfare. And just, thank you again. It was a, a long agenda we had to go through. Just thank you for all the patience, and thank you, staff, for all the work. And I look forward to each and every meeting. They're always fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Rivas, do you have any comments?
No. Mr. Beltran, Councilman Beltran pretty much summed it up. So I'll just pass that to you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Green?
No comment. Thank you.
Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Yeah, I just have a few things. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Tree. I mean, that's big. We got our budget done tonight. I think it's a milestone meeting tonight. I am, I'm really excited about a lot of things that are going on in our city, especially that Mighty 190 had a great contact out in the county at a meeting recently about how we may continue to build on what Kathy has been doing down there. She's been spearheading most of that. There's a lot of great volunteers that she gets involved. But some good discussion tonight in the, in the break about murals and things like that. We have to continue to build on that success and turning what was once a very difficult and challenging thing where everyone was living down there now to a place where we can go and enjoy a green space together and have a community event. And so let's continue to, to support Kathy and all of those things in any way that we can. And as we go into the heritage, and we'll talk about that probably at the next meeting, we'll talk about maybe adding some events down at the parkway to make that a destination. When you read the history of Porterville, that's where people used to go and picnic. Let's make it that way again. I know that there's a lot of things I want to say, but I'm going, I'm going to keep this simple tonight. And I want to make a statement on common sense. You know, went to West Putnam School as a child, kindergarten. And I remember playing blocks, and I got in trouble a lot, as any young rambunctious boy might. And, you know, you always try to tell the teacher, you know, hey, teacher, you know this or that. And, and, you know, I learned a real important lesson in kindergarten, that when I would point to people's bad behavior to try to justify my own bad behavior, that wasn't allowed. So as a child, you have to grow up, because you can't point to someone's bad behavior to justify your own bad behavior, because that's immaturity. That's infantilism. Now, when I got a little older, and I used to ride my skateboard two miles to get to Bellevue School, and Ms. Dinwiddie reminded me in the second grade, she reminded me why you don't point to bad behavior to justify your own bad behavior. Because when you're grown up, you don't do that. So when I see people politicize violence, like saying, well, you don't care about these people. You only care about those people. We need to care about all people. And we need to be thinking about violence in the right way as adults, and not pointing to bad behavior to justify bad behavior. The infantilized culture that we have right now disgusts me. And when people come into this chamber lobbyists for things, let's just, let's just talk about this for a second. The shameful outbursts in our chambers that promote or normalize violence are hateful. That's not loving your neighbor. That's not good political discourse. It's not good mature discourse. It's terrible discourse. And it promotes violence, and it promotes hatred, and it's not going to be tolerated in a civil society. It's unacceptable. When we get to a point in our society where cultural Marxism and politics is more important than people's lives, we have problems, because you start to think, well, it's okay for some people to die so others can live. That's wrong. You know, Gen Z, if you look at the statistics on Gen Z, just Gen Z, 28% of Gen Z was aborted in the womb. 28%. Mostly people of color. And this is a euphemism for genocide. They call it medical care. But the coarsening of our culture and the infantilism of our culture has caused us the discourse to be at a level of a kindergartner. And it needs to stop. And I'd like to call for everyone here and everybody watching for prayer. And I said this when some, somebody came and attacked someone, our students in one of our schools. And I said, if they attack one of us, they attack all of us. We don't play favorites when it comes to violence. Violence is a crime. We don't condone it. We don't accept it. We don't promote it. We don't normalize it. And I would call on the faith people in this community to come together and have some prayer vigils. Let's bring maturity. Let's bring virtue. Let's bring pro-life back into the culture and the conversation in our city, in our county, in our state, our country, in our world. There's something going on right now, and you can't ignore it. It's not going away. People are sick and tired of it, because we can't condone violence. Violence is a crime against all of us, and don't politicize it. And if I see and continue to see the infantilism that comes with it, where people are saying, it's okay for that person to die, that, you see people getting fired all over the place because it's unacceptable. And when you come into these chambers and you mock the mayor of our city, an elected official, for trying to stand up for what's right, that's a shame. That shouldn't be happening in these chambers. It shouldn't be happening anywhere. And I would call on the faith community to come together in prayer for Charlie, for that young lady who was murdered on the subway after he'd been let out of prison 14 times. That's terrible. What's happened to us? We need to get back to law and order. We need to take care of our kids, and we need to stop politicizing violence, because this is unacceptable. It should be unacceptable to everyone. And we have to be adults, not kindergartners. It's never good to mock someone's death. And then when you mock the mayor, when he tries to stand up for the right thing, it's shameful. And I'm just tired of it. And that's common sense commentary for me tonight. And I would just call on the faith community to come together. Let's get our identity back. Let's figure out what right and wrong is again. Let's figure out what good and evil is again. And let's start calling it out for what it is. And that's what I want to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The philosophical one. Always so good at it. With that, there was some comments tonight about the school shooting and not being mentioned. You know, I take moments of silence for, for these events, almost every meeting, because they're, they're happening. We have police shootings. They, it's around the nation. We have a rod in our culture, and there's just no doubt about it. But one thing I will talk about with the schools, you know, when there was, there wasn't always security at airports, but then a shooting happened, and they got security at the airports. There were always, there wasn't always security at football stadiums and big stadiums. But a shooting happened, and they got security. Our schools need protected by armed officers. That's just the truth. And I'm talking nationwide. This is beyond Porterville. We're willing to spend billions of dollars around the world to, to fight wars and do different things, but we won't put an armed officer in every school. The greatest deterrent is a show of force. These people doing these shootings are cowards, and they're demonic. I, I would, I, I want to congratulate the council. AB 84 has been defeated this year. There's still opportunity for the bill to come back next year, but it is off the table. AB 4495 has gone forward. It sounds like it's going to be going to the governor's desk. I, I wonder, I, I asked this question. I wonder if he's going to veto this bill. I wonder. Violates parental rights. If he's going to run for president, I wonder what stance he'll take. I'm interested. I have a feeling it's going to get vetoed. With that, I want to congratulate and thank our police department for an outstanding job. We had a stabbing out by the casino. Within a couple weeks, we had these guys busted, right? And it takes a lot of legwork to get to that point. A lot of hard work by our detectives, boots on the grounds. Great job, gentlemen. And ladies, of course. And so, it, just amazing job. One stat, I know we're, we're not allowed to talk about it, because if you talk about it, then, you know, when it, when it does happen. We haven't had a murder in Porterville in two years. Outstanding. Outstanding. It's just a great job. Continue the efforts. Continue to address the homeless. Continue to take these drug dealers off the street. Continue to go after the criminals that cause havoc in Porterville. Thank you for the work you're doing. Outstanding. You know, it's interesting. There's a bill coming through about officers covering their face. It's, it's quite interesting, because the state can't go after ICE officers or federal officers, but they're going to try to control our officers that, that don't use this tactic. But it's interesting. There's people in the audience that are still wearing face masks. I haven't seen these things since, like, 2020. And, and so I just find it very interesting, because I watch you, and you'll take your mask off to have conversations during recess. But then, when we go back live with the cameras, you cover your face. And so it's just interesting point. But if we're going to go the route of making it where you could dox officers, maybe we should go away from face masks, because they're proven failed. They don't stop the viruses. So really, all you're doing is covering your face, because you don't want to be seen in the disgrace that you're putting out. I just would leave it at that. I appreciate all the hard work from staff. Congratulations, Mr. Tree. I'm looking forward to the direction of this city. We already talked about where we want to go. I don't need to hit it again. It's already 10 o'clock. I'll give you the last words of the night.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank the O'Sullivan family business for continuing to invest in our community. We often talk about continuous improvement. It's important to me, and I think it's important for this organization's growth. Sometimes it's big moves. Sometimes it's small, like the added tables and microphones that we added to the council chambers. This allows staff to be engaged in the meeting, be more efficient. They can speak right from there. And at times multitask, so I hope you like it. Just, just continuing to look for ways to be improve, improve, not only in our daily job, but also at city council meetings. I want to take a moment to, to thank, thank staff for their support and effort. I want to highlight Claudia and her department and her staff for bringing the Henderson project one step closer to reality. And, and her department's effort to improve the sign ordinance. This is setting up the stage for bringing to you very soon an updated development ordinance that will make Porterville, and I hope this is going to be true. This is what we're working towards, the most business-friendly city in the valley. That's our goal. Now, in, in this new role, it's time to bring on some new leadership to the team. And so with, with transit, I want to let the council know that Russell Isom, our shop superintendent, who has served the city over 20 years, has been selected as the transportation director, who will bring a fresh look and leadership to the transportation department. And Russell's well-respected, not only within the organization, but throughout the city. And so I'm really excited to have him be a part of the leadership team. It's starting to come together, and looking forward to what Russell can bring to, to the transportation department. Now, I do want to give strength and not added pressure to our DARTS team tomorrow, as they try to bring home the corporate games trophy. So Sarah, we're going to do this. I have, I have faith in you. We're going to do this. We're going to bring home the trophy. The last time the, the trophy that came is from our fire department. So see if we can do that.
But no pressure, right?
No, no pressure. No pressure. Just a couple minutes, Mayor. I know we want, we were, we're hoping this is going to be a, a short meeting, but we'll, we'll finish up. I just want to say a couple words that-
Hey, in, in the gist of all our meetings, this is actually doing really well.
We're doing good? Okay. All right. I'll keep going. Just a couple more things. You know, public service has, has been my calling my entire career. It's literally in, in my DNA. You know, thanks to, to my father, who also served as a mayor. I grew up watching him and learned what it took, what it meant to be a public servant. And, and now to serve in this role in the community where I was born and raised is the greatest privilege in my professional life. I want to thank you for that. But I also want to take this time, you know, this is a time for celebration for so many reasons. And this year, we're celebrating our 100th anniversary as a charter city, a milestone that reminds us of the vision of those who came before us. You know, in 1925, the people of Porterville chose home rule, affirming that local decisions should be made by local voices. And that principle remains just as important today. And I, it will guide me in ensuring our organization is accountable, transparent, and responsive to the needs of our residents. And at the heart of this responsibility is just a simple truth. All we have to do, everything that we have to do is to bring value to the taxpayer. That's a simple thing. And that means operating efficiently, providing excellent customer service, like you mentioned, Mayor, and holding ourselves accountable at every level of the organization. That trust placed in me is significant, and I take that seriously. I want to be a good steward of public resources. And then finally, I want to recognize my wife, Brooke, and, and our family. I couldn't devote as much time as this job takes without their support at home. Thank you for being by my side. And as we begin this journey together, I just want to thank my wife and my family. I'm excited about the path ahead. Together with the council, we'll build on Porterville's legacy with a focus on, on value, bringing value to the taxpayer. So thank you. I'm proud to serve as, as city manager. And that's it for tonight.
Congratulations, Mr. Tree. Meeting's adjourned.